I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you all to the September zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Arundecoit. There's a few preliminary announcements I'd like to make. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by Donna tonight for the purpose of a record, but not as a verbatim transcript. So when you come up to the podium, please identify yourself each time and speak into the microphone, give your name and your address. We will follow the items in which they appear, in the order in which they appear on the agenda. There should be extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or the applicant's representative will come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their address. They will then be sworn, and then they will present their case. During their presentation, the members of the board will have an opportunity to ask the applicant questions, and then we will open the case for public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the applications, they come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and then direct their questions or comments to the board, not to the applicant. We will take people first who wish to speak in favor of the application, then we will take people who wish to speak in opposition to the application. People who don't know whether they're for or against the application like we had last time, we'll take them last so that they can perhaps figure out where they are. Then after everyone has given their, the public portion has been completed, we'll let the applicant or their representative return to the podium in order to respond to anything that came up during the public input portion of the meeting. Once that is completed, the case will be closed, and we'll move on to the next case on the agenda. Once all the cases have been presented, the board will take a short recess, and then we will return to deliberate with respect to the cases that were heard. We will deliberate in the order in which the cases appear on the agenda and the order in which those are still present. So if the first applicant has left, we will take up the second case provided that the second applicant is present. Once we've completed all the cases for the applicants that are still present in the order in which they appear on the agenda, we'll then go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on the cases for which the applicants have left. No further input is allowed during the deliberative portion of the meeting, but you're welcome to stay and listen if you choose to do so. If you wish to leave and you're interested in knowing the results of the cases, you can call into the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m., or you can watch on TV during one of the many times that the meeting will be played in the next month. Having said all that, we will now take up the first case on the agenda.
ZB 1309-1, upon the matter of request by Piper Wood for an area variance to construct a front porch with less than required front setback on premises 109 Chameau Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, everyone. I live at 109 Chameau Road. I'll just explain, yeah.
You can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Just for the point of information, the reason we swear the applicants is because several years ago, we had an instance where there were some representations that were made to the board that turned out not to be true, and we found out that because there was no sworn testimony, we were left pretty much without any remedy about that other than to re-calender the case and take different action. So now we swear the applicants so that in case we have a problem, and we have not, we have more recourse available, just in case anyone was wondering about that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. On October 29th, my home was hit by a tree during Hurricane Sandy. The tree was located on the easement between the sidewalk and the street. It was a really large tree, and it totally demolished my six-and-a-half-foot-by-12-foot enclosed windowside porch. It was a three-season room that ran along our driveway. We considered rebuilding the three-season porch, but thought it would increase our property value and look aesthetically more appealing if we built an open porch and wrapped it around the east side. I'm appealing to you for a variance. The proposed setback will be 24 feet, opposed to the 30 feet minimum required. We'd like to build an open porch to run along the entire front of the house, which is 30 feet, and would be six foot wide, and would wrap around the house on the east side, running along the driveway, three foot wide and 10 foot long. There'll be two sets of steps and a four-foot opening, and stairs and handrails on both sides of the center and in front of the door. There will be a handrail on the east side of the stairs, too. There'll be a roof over the entire structure that'll be singled, or shingled, I'm sorry, and tie into the existing roof line. The framing will be constructed of pressure-treated wood and decked with composite materials such as trucks. Columns and railings will be white, no-maintenance exterior. At this point, there is still severe damage to my home and the demolition of the side porch and the brick stoop and the railing around it. I feel this improvement will beautify the neighborhood, and I do not feel the setback will make an aesthetic difference. The two houses next to me have a shorter setback than mine. I originally wanted to build an eight-foot-wide porch, but I understand town guidelines, and I feel six-foot width would probably be the smallest structure. I wouldn't want to construct anything smaller than that, so I do have a picture.
Have you measured out the difference between six feet and eight feet to be sure that six feet will work? Because I know a lot of times people think six will work instead of eight, then they build it and find out that they wish they had some more room.
Well, you always want more room, but I just think it'll look better if it's six foot. Yeah, we did measure it out. My contractor's here.
Okay.
And it'll look like this. I enclosed a picture with the, this is exactly what it's going to look like. It's going to wrap around the side, and I have dormer windows. That was always my dream, to have a Cape Cod with a wraparound porch, so through tragedy, sometimes, you know, positive things come out, so that's what I request.
That's right.
I just have a question about the steps in the front.
Okay.
How many stairs are going to be put in? Because the drawing, the drawing is showing three stairs to the bottom. That is not, Donna, is that part of the setback requirement, the stair, the actual stairs themselves?
No, the stairs are not.
Okay, so it still stays at the 24 feet?
Right, the platform, right.
And the drawing's showing three stairs, is that correct?
It will be three stairs, yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak but isn't sure whether they're in favor or opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next case.
ZB 1309-2, upon the matter of request by Mary Ann Fenara for an area variance to construct a six-foot-high wooden fence and side yard exceeding maximum height allowable on premises 15 Kenery Drive in an R1 residential district.
My name is Sam LaFranco, and I'm here with Mary Ann Fenara. She has a real simple problem. She wants to replace the existing.
Hold on, hold on. If you can give your names, addresses, and then we'll have you raise your right hand.
My name is Sam F. LaFranco, and I live at 1067 Chaneywood Drive in Webster. Go ahead, Mary.
My name is Mary Ann Fenara, and I live at 15 Kenery Drive.
If you could both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Presently, Mary Ann, on the side of her house, which is actually the back of her house, but the side of the lot, has an existing four-foot fence and a six-foot fence, okay? It just so happens, over the years, nobody ever took a permit out on these old fences. What she'd like to do now is reconstruct the whole area back with a six-foot fence and comply with the existing ordinance with the town. It's actually upgrading what's actually there over the years.
And this is necessary because she's got a corner lot that, even though the front of the house, as you would look at it, is on?
Kenery.
Kenery. The town regards it as being on the other street, so the fence is in the side yard instead of the backyard, but it would be the backyard that everyone would think of.
Tailing backwards.
Okay.
It's just one of those circumstances.
It happens with almost every corner lot that comes in front of it.
So basically, she has a dog. The dog is big enough to jump the four footer. He goes over it like it's not there. He does not make the six foot, so basically that's what it's for, to keep the dog within her property bounds, and that's basically the case being presented tonight.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. Please give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Kurt Seber. I live at 91 Deerfield Drive.
I'm Barbara Seber. I live at 91 Deerfield Drive.
We're in favor of this. We are, we live across the street from the Fenaras', and we've seen the fence that's there. We believe that putting in a new fence would be a great upgrade.
It would also help for peace between the neighbors because the dog's been a source of contention with him jumping over, and I believe this would solve a lot of problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Does anyone wish to express a view neither for nor against this application? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to say anything further?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next case.
ZB 1309-3, upon the matter of request by Barbara Bello for an area variance to construct a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 33 Angeles Drive in an R2 residential district.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Bello. I reside at 33 Angeles Drive. I'm Elizabeth Chambers, and I reside in Grease.
Grease, okay. If you'd raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm requesting for approval to install a six-foot-high fence adjacent to my neighbor's home on the left side of my property, starting from my garage to the end of his foundation, which is approximately 30 feet. I've recently purchased 33 Angeles Drive, and I've been concerned for my safety as I live alone, and I've been threatened by my neighbor and continually harassed by my neighbor since I've resided there. I would feel more safe and more secure with a fence six feet high due to the fact that our homes are very close together, and I have pictures showing, if you need them, of the closeness from his bedroom window and my porch that I reside.
Those pictures to Mr. Santoro.
And would this be a continuation of the fence that I saw that's up to the back, I think?
Correct.
Okay. And it'd come up to the front and tie in with the front of the garage?
From the end of the foundation to my garage.
Okay. And then there wouldn't be any, it would conceal the view in from his house into yours?
It would conceal the view, and I would feel more secure as I have a Florida room that is right next to his bedroom windows. And I don't, I don't sit out there because I don't feel safe or...
And I take it there wouldn't be a gate there where you're planning on?
I would put the gate from my garage to the end of the lot line.
To the end of the fence? Okay. And just for the record, we have received, in addition to your letter, we received a letter that was signed by Thomas and Donna
Yes.
Dapier at 26 Angeles Drive, David and Terry Anderson at 9 Angeles Drive, Irene
Mayo.
Mayo. Mayo at 2808 Culver, Robert Sanbin at 59 Angeles Drive, Fiorelli San Filippo at 43 Angeles Drive, Kim Walker at 36 Angeles Drive, Annette Velasquez at 2790 Culver Road, Elvin Ramos at 2820 Culver Road, and Tom Scramali at 2830 Culver Road.
Yes. These are all the neighbors across the street, next door, and behind, behind me on Culver Road.
I take it they're not the neighbor to the south?
No. No. But they all approve.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was only thinking about the fact that when we grant a variance, it stays with the property, so that if something should change, say you moved, then the new owner would have that fence there. It could stay there. They wouldn't have to reapply
Right.
For a variance. And I think that's just the point I wanted to make, that this being so tight and so close, it's going to be a very obvious barrier. This is probably what you want anyway, right? That's what you have to say. Okay, and Chris, do you know that?
New owners also free to take it down if they get along better with the neighbor.
Right, right.
But the neighbor can't take it down?
Neighbor can't take it down, no. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
I'm her sister, and I am in favor due to the fact, unfortunately, there have been some incidences that were really minor that got blown out of proportion, and it's a very uncomfortable situation for her, and I just feel that she'd be much more comfortable.
I need to be isolated. I want to isolate myself.
So this doesn't occur again.
All right. Step up to the podium, give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Jeffrey Scott. I have Hellenic Home Improvements. I'm at 772 West Side Drive. I'm the contractor who put it up, her fence up, and I'm also, I'm a couple with her. I live in Gates, so it's a little distance from Arundecoit, and I feel, since I'm there three or four nights a week, and when I'm not there, I feel more secure that a fence that high should be more privacy for her, more security for her. And I feel a little bit more at ease at home, that she feels a little bit more comfortable in her own home.
I'm to the point now, I have a two-car garage. When I pull in, I just pull in and shut the door right away, so I avoid any confrontation or communication.
But as you see by the pictures that you've all seen, that it is a nice-looking fence. It has decorative tops on it. It's not an eyesore for the community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up. Evening.
My name is Steve Tordoretty, and I live at 23 Angeles Drive.
Okay. No. Only the applicants.
Okay. Well, let me just start. I kind of thrown off guard here a little bit. I'd like to say that I'm offended by the remarks that were made against me. I am no threat to Barbara Bello. I am actually the fellow that told her about the house when it became available. We've known each other since high school, which is quite a while now, and as Barbara's sister said, that, I feel like I'm on trial here, but as Barbara's sister said, there have been some minor disagreements that did get blown out of proportion, but I am no threat. Okay? So let me start. First of all, I do have some pictures as well that show the properties, and I'd like to pass those. Let me start by saying that my family has owned the property at 23 Angeles Drive for approximately 56 years. During these 56 years, there have been three previous owners that did not have a fence, and the properties were continuous. There is no doorway to my home on the north side, which is where the fence is proposed, only two-bedroom windows. So there's a bedroom window from the master bedroom, and there's also a bedroom window from the second-largest bedroom, which is not in use, meaning that there is no foot traffic in or out of my house on the north side of the property. The north side of the property is reasonably isolated and private. There is nine feet from my house to the lot line. There is six feet, four inches from the adjoining home to the lot line, which is where the garage and the back porch is located. The house measures approximately nine feet, six inches from the top of the house to the ground, meaning that a six-foot fence would be nearly as tall as the house itself.
I'm sorry, can you run that by me again?
Yes. The house, 33 Angeles Drive, is approximately nine feet, six inches tall from the top of the house to the ground, meaning that a six-foot fence alongside the house, the six-foot fence would be nearly as tall as the house itself, which I guess is what they're looking for, privacy, but...
Two-thirds, right?
Yes. In all of the Culver Meadows subdivision, which includes Angeles and Alhambur Drive, Maroa and Del Rio Drive, Catalina Drive, Breton Road, and Brower Road, there are no six-foot fences between the properties in close proximity, such as my own. But there is one exception of a six-foot fence between two corner homes on Angeles Drive, where the lot sizes are much greater between the two properties, so those two homes are corner homes. A six-foot fence between the two properties, given the height and the depth between the two homes, gives it the appearance of a wall and not a fence. The six-foot fence would run east and west on the lot line from the garage, as was mentioned, to the backyard, which there is already, because of approval, there is already the six-foot fences there in the backyard, but not between the two homes as of right now. The six-foot fence also runs east and west on the north side of the property, from the rear of the home to the west rear property line. So basically, you've got two six-foot fences right now on either side of the home. But what I'd like to point out, that the new six-foot fence does not connect with the southern portion or the backyard of the fence. It is, however, connected by an older four-foot fence. It's an existing fence in need of somewhat repair, and what you end up with is a six-foot fence, a four-foot fence, and then a six-foot fence again. So, you know, it's visually not appealing, is what I'm trying to say.
Where's the four-foot fence?
The four-foot fence is at the rear, it would be at the, let's see, it would be
Be the west side, right?
On the west end of the property line, along, would run north and south.
Okay.
Right? So given these facts that I have presented to you today, I ask that you deny the request for the variance, most importantly because the six-foot fence will not be aesthetically pleasing or appealing to look at. It is my belief that a regulation four-foot fence is quite sufficient between the two homes, and I am no threat to Barbara. And I thank you for your time.
You're up. Do you wish to, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak but isn't speaking to one side or the other? Does the applicant wish to respond?
First of all, when I bought this home, I did not consider putting up a fence. I put up a fence because of the actions of my neighbor, who continually harassed me even before I was moving in, for little things. You plowed too close to my bush, your dog is peeing on my bush, there's a cigarette butt in my yard. Numerous things. I didn't really have the funds for the fence, but my friend offered to put it up. I would have never considered a fence had I not felt threatened and harassed.
Okay.
Basically.
All right. Thank you. We'll close that case and move on to the next case.
ZB 1309-4, upon the matter of request by Catherine Wyble for an area variance to construct an attached three-sided carport garage with less than required rear setback on premises 102 Seacliff Road in an R3 residential district.
Hello, Catherine Wyble, 102 Seacliff.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. I see that you've submitted, in addition to the letter, a letter signed by 18 people who reside on Seacliff, Mallard...
It's any neighbor that comes close to the property.
Lynn Drive.
They all want it.
Pine Hill Drive, and some other road that I can't read the name of.
Pine Hill.
Oh, no, I guess that's Seacliff, too. Okay.
Seacliff, Pine Hill, Lynn.
All right. And it's signed by 18 neighbors. I won't read all of their names into the record, but if anyone's interested, they're part of the record.
I didn't hear of the packet of the pictures, too. You didn't?
Yes, it was part of their application.
Okay.
Yep.
I have probably the steepest stone driveway in Sabreys. I need a turnaround when you get to the top because you can only enter one way. I have a dilapidated garage that I need to take down because homeowners won't cover it any longer. I finally have the money to take it down and build a new one. The setback required is 30 feet. I'm asking to go 17 feet and attach a three-sided garage or carport on the back of the house.
If I understand it correctly, essentially what you're going to do is swap the turnaround for the garage.
Exactly.
Only the garage is going to be a carport instead of a garage, right?
If you let me.
Assuming it's granted, right?
Yes.
I think your neighbor across the street may have you beat for the steepest driveway. I think we dealt with them about a couple of years ago.
Divel?
Directly across the street.
Signed. He was very excited.
Goes almost straight up, yeah.
Pretty basic.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and this particular photograph?
Yes.
By the way, when I was there, I didn't drive up the driveway.
No.
I kind of peeked around the best I could.
Okay.
But what is, what is that, looks like new structure.
That is my dad trying to help, and he started. I told him I applied for the permit. He didn't know that I needed a variance, so my dad was trying to help when I was out of town. Thanks for the fine, Dad.
Little head start. Little head start.
Yep.
I'm assuming he covered the fine too, right?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
But he's not going to charge me.
All right.
So. The town engineer also came out and looked the day that I came in and begged for forgiveness before I even got the letter from the town in the mail. I paid all the permit fees, I'm ready to go, I just need a blessing from you guys.
The question, calling it a carport versus a garage, is it going to be enclosed walls all the way around?
The original idea was three sides, no door, and that's just because I didn't need electric. But if you can let me put electric in there too, then yes, I would like to make a garage with a door because I don't want to get out and open the door.
So, I mean, we're basically, we're basically doing the variance for the setback.
Right.
So it really doesn't matter to us whether it's a...
No, Don, for me, in the building permit is when that would come up, not for the variance.
Your application to the town would have to include, obviously, more materials.
Right. And there's a diagram in there with material used, and don't laugh, but this is the diagram, and it does have a door on it.
You never laugh at an application.
Right. But no, it'll have an eight-foot door and a man door too.
So as far as your neighbors and everybody knows that it's going to be a garage?
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify, you'd rather have a garage?
I would.
Just want to make sure I understand what you're really after here, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to open the door by myself, that's for sure. I'd rather push the button and have electric and use it as a garage.
Is that the diagram you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Looks wonderful to me.
Perfect.
Go to work right off of that.
All right. Is that a yes?
No, no, no. You just got to wait, you got to wait.
All right, let's go.
And we have nothing to do with electric.
Okay. No, but the town engineer was there, he checked it out. And even though my dad started without a permit, he did everything by the book, he checked all that.
All right.
You're taking the whole garage?
Yes.
How many permits for that too?
I already paid for. I already have it.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone here to speak? All right, we'll close this case and move on to the next one, thank you.
Okay, thank you. ZB 1309-5. Upon the matter of request by Michael Krego for an area variance to park, store two recreation vehicles from April 1st to November 1st on driveway and front yard exceeding the number of recreation vehicles allowed to be parked in front yard, and for utility trailer exceeding maximum size allowable on premises 230 Avondale Road in R2 Residential District.
Evening.
Evening.
Michael Krego, 230 Avondale.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm looking for a variance just to have my trailers in the front yard, as there is no room on either side of my house to put trailers in the backyard by any stretch of the imagination. I have about a four-foot clearance on one side, and for one trailer to be oversized. I hear that it's a 6 by 12 and my trailer is 8 by 17.
I saw that one of the trailers is in the backyard now.
Currently, yes, just because I already got a fine, because we kind of got caught in limbo between paperwork and all that, and I wanted to make sure I was good by everybody else immediately.
You have anything from the neighbors?
I have five documents, I believe, turned in from neighbors pretty much touching every side of my lot but one, because she's barely ever home. I have one of my neighbors with me here tonight. I haven't had anybody speak to me personally and say that they have any issue with it. Every person that I spoke to, I'm relatively new to the neighborhood, I've only been there six months, but anybody that I spoke to says they have no problem with what I do over there, that they love the work that I've been trying to get done. The house wasn't owned, or was owned by a lady until she was 93, nothing has been done in about 30 years, and...
What's that trailer's used for?
Uh, multiple things, car shows, ATVs, snowmobiles. Everything, everything.
Where are the cars stored?
Cars?
Yeah.
The ones that I take to car shows, my father has some in his garage. I had a 65 mailed, but I sold to get the house. So that one doesn't go for rides very much anymore, not in my trailer anyway. I do lots of things with them. When I originally purchased them, I bought ones big enough to transport cars, because I've done car shows for years with my father.
You're not the property owner, is it your dad that's...
My father is, sir.
Okay. And he's owned the property how long?
Uh, six months.
Okay.
Bought it January 26th, I believe the day it closed.
And he lives there or doesn't live there?
No, sir.
Did he... Do you have anything submitted with your application from him that indicates that as the property owner, he consented to your making the application on his behalf?
No, he was out of town, but he was the one that told me to get it taken care of. I was the reason he had a fine in the first place, so he told me to get on it instantaneously.
Well, except that I think, I think that we're required, before we can approve it, to have something from the owner that allows us to consider an application made by somebody other than the owner. This came up about a year ago, I think, in relation to a garage that somebody who wasn't the owner wanted to build next to the Ivan Green School property, and we had to get, we have to get something from the owner that says that you have the permission...
I can have him submit a piece of paperwork as well if you'd like, that's not a problem. He's actually watching my children right now, so I can be here.
All right, well, we would need, that we would need.
That's not a problem.
In case he's watching.
Have a for you for the evenings out if you really need it that bad.
Most of your letters state they don't mind having a trailer. You're talking about having two or one?
They've been the same two trailers that have been in the property since I've moved in.
If you do have to come back or anything, I would suggest that you change those as read two trailers. When I'm looking at that, I'm thinking your neighbors are thinking only one.
I can do that as well. Again, I have one with me tonight as well. They're all accustomed to what I've had there, it wasn't like I tried to pull one over on my neighbors, so to speak. That was just what I could get done for you guys immediately.
The picture of this trailer is on the lawn, is it?
That was when I first moved in, sir. I hadn't even gotten any work done or anything, it just catch people at off times.
So that's not where you're going to turn the...
Not by any stretch of the imagination.
That trailer looks like it's a dump trailer.
That trailer, I used to take multiple different things from property to property. I used to move stone over to my new place, I do all sorts of things with them.
So it's kind of a contractor's trailer. Actually, the other one looks kind of like it's a lawnmower style trailer.
The other one I got is an open flatbed because I got a deal on it for what it was. I could have just got a car hauler, I got that even cheaper than I would have got my car hauler with, and it had the side accessibility, excuse me, side accessibility so I could put my grandmother's wheelchair out there. That was the killer for doing car shows and stuff, is I could just sneak her wheelchair right up on the side, I didn't have to take the car off or anything else. That's kind of why...
Just look more, instead of recreational type trailers, they look more commercial type trailers.
I bought them for use for everything. It was my easy way to cover all bases.
Are you in the construction business, is that what you do?
No, I did landscaping up till about three years ago, but I haven't done it much since my son was born. Enjoy time with the kids, can't replace that with anything.
Well, what's the alternative location you would park these if we do not grant a variance?
I honestly don't have an alternative location, sort of paying for one which is food and diapers out of my kid's mouth and off their behind, I guess you could say. I don't have another location. I really, I could try to put him in the backyard, but then I'm just going to become a nuisance to my neighbor, because I'm going to have to ask him every 30 seconds, hey, can I get that so I can go do this, or hey, can you move your cars? I don't want to be that guy the first day coming into a new neighborhood, that nobody has a problem with out of the gate anyway.
Well, I was just going to ask you, if two are really necessary, what if you only had one?
Two are necessary because I don't want to use the big one if I can get away with using the small one. Gas is a fortune now, it's cheaper to pull one.
What do you mean?
Cheaper to pull the small one than the big one.
Okay, so why would you need to park both of them in the driveway at the same time?
I have one in the back right now. That's just in case like for months if I...
The one in the back...
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't violate any provision of the code. You're allowed to store something in the back as long as it's behind the rear foundation.
When I spoke to Melissa, or is it Michelle, one of the lady that's usually out front, she said to put it in that way, that way if I ever had somebody, I already have one fine, that way if somebody ever comes by and say I'd been moving something that day and there's something in the driveway, I can't get a fine because I already applied for the variance to have two in the driveway. I'm already, I'm already in bad faith with the town and I never tried to be there in the first place.
And I have, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance here, it's section 235 104, which talks about recreational and commercial vehicles. And it defines a recreational vehicle as a vehicular type that can be towed, hauled, or driven, and primarily designed for temporary living accommodations, recreational camping, and travel use, which doesn't seem to me to pertain to what is depicted in the photographs and what you're talking about. Then it says, including but not limited to a travel trailer, camper motorhome, tent trailer, camping trailer, boat trailer, snowmobile, snowmobile trailer, jet ski, jet ski trailer, all-terrain vehicle, ATV trailer, and utility trailer. But I don't think that set, that definition refers to what you've depicted in the photographs, and I also have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because in addition to the letters that were submitted from your neighbors, the letter that you submitted also says, the trailer in question is 17 feet by 8 feet, and is primarily used to transport ATVs and cars to car shows. I don't, there was nothing in this application that I saw other than on the front where it says to park two recreation vehicles in the front yard. So I have the same concern about, you know, your neighbors saying they don't mind the trailer, or his trailer, is what the letters talk, they don't say plural. And I think by the time you've got two trailers in the driveway, you're pretty much up to the road, right?
Not even kind of. My driveway is probably 50 some feet long.
Okay.
I'm still, with both trailers in the driveway, I'm still probably, I'd say 25 to 30 feet away from the sidewalk, enough room to fit a truck with five feet space till the sidewalk.
Okay. We also got copies of four complaints, are you familiar with those?
No, I am not, sir.
All right, one was from March 25th, that talked about a broken down vehicle on the driveway, as well as a trailer with a pile of wood, and another trailer parked in front of the property with plants on it.
I'd lived in the house for three weeks and the car's long been sold since. I never got a pie or cookies when I moved into the neighborhood, I got town complaints.
Okay, then there's about a commercial trailer parked on the grass from June, and a trailer being parked on the front lawn and storing inventory of plants in front of the house for his business, lawn maintenance.
It was for the house, they're all out in front of the house right now.
And then there was another one about several piles of dirt in the front yard for several months.
There's two piles in the front yard right now, half of the pile on one side is missing because it's been getting transported around the yard. Your Honor, you're not...
No, you're working on moving dirt around, is that what you're doing?
I've, I'm trying to do a fill in the backyard, I've removed two trees, I'm trying to put a complete landscape into the place.
So that's why the dirt's there.
It had a dilapidated kitchen, it had a dilapidated bathroom, I'm trying to get everything done in the house that nothing's been done for 30 years. I can't build Roman a day by myself with two kids and one woman to help me take care of the house, it's impossible.
Okay.
I've tried to do as fast as I can. I don't get welcomes other than the few people that have sent me letters and the gentleman that's with me tonight, I get...
Do you have a place to store one of the trailers other than the property?
No, I do not. That is where I have, I bought the house figuring everything was okay, I've seen other people in the neighborhood with trailers, didn't seem like a problem, and none of my neighbors care. And any touching side from me, anywhere within 200 feet of me, basically, they're all friendly, I, some of them have kids, my kids play with their kids, it's, I'm moving into a neighborhood, nobody seems to have a problem. I don't know where any of the complaints came from, but I can't be on top of it all instantaneously. I just, it's impossible for me, I'm 35 years old, I'm not Mr. Wizard.
Okay.
Do you understand where the neighbors are, you know, the reasons the neighbors are complaining is, and just driving by the house, I did the other day, you know, between the dirt, the trailers, the pot and plants, and all the stuff in the front yard, it looks, it does not look well.
I've lost $1,000 in flowers this year because I can't get them in fast enough, because I have all sorts of wild flowers that I would have loved to have been in, they died because I couldn't get a copy.
You have to understand, you have to understand the other neighbors that do take impeccable care of their yard, and impeccable care of everything, and then you've got your house, which you've got the utility trailers in the driveway, and you got all the other stuff going on.
It really set them off when it was on the front yard for the first week when I was in there, and I understand that, but again, I had just moved into the property.
I know, but if...
And honestly, we're talking about dirt and flowers and everything else, and I was here to talk about a trailer. I don't understand.
I understand it, but see, we approved last month, we approved a gentleman's truck that was parked up next to his truck, his commercial truck. The guy's house is impeccable, the truck is impeccable, he tucks it along the side, and there's nothing offensive to anybody in the neighborhood, they all came and backed them up. The problem you're having, or some of the problems that it's creating, all the problem, is that the whole thing looks kind of in dismay.
The house had no work done to it for 30 years.
No, I understand, I understand, but you know...
Nothing. I can't do it all, I still have to create a living condition for my children.
I certainly understand, but now putting two trailers in the driveway doesn't help your circumstance.
I understand that, but I still have no place to put them. I'm doing everything by the books, I have all my neighbors' approval.
Well, you're not, but I mean, you know...
I'm trying to, I'm certainly trying to be on top of it.
Our attorney has pointed out to me that he, the provisions of section 235 104.1 of the code, which more closely seem to reflect your circumstance, and that pertains to commercial vehicles, and it indicates...
Not a commercial vehicle.
Well...
If anything, it'd be a utility trailer, which is why I'm going for oversized, it's not a commercial vehicle.
You may not classify it as a commercial vehicle.
It's not what it is.
But it's our job to interpret the town code, and our definitions don't come from other towns, they don't come from what's generally understood, they come from what's defined in our ordinance that we're charged with enforcing and given the discretion to issue variances for. So you need to take a look at 235 104.1, because I read you the definition of what constitutes a recreational vehicle, and I told you that in my view, what you're, what you've got isn't what that definition is talking about, okay? But here's the requirement here where it does talk, and this is what, in my view, and I don't speak for anyone else on the board other than myself, but in my view, it's referred to, it constitutes a construction equipment trailers. And it says that in subsection 10 of 235 104.1E, it says, "All other vehicles exceeding any two of the following dimensions: overall body height of 90 inches, body length of 240 inches, or body width of 96 inches." And then it has certain exceptions in sub-paragraph F. So I think you need to come back with a consent from your father, who's the property owner, to allow the application to be considered, because without it, we can't. And I also think that you might do better if you took a look at 235 104.1 as opposed to 235 104, and perhaps adjusted your application. But I'm not going to tell you that you have to do that. But I will tell you that we will consider the application that's in front of us as we interpret it. So you might want to look at that and see if you need to adjust your application, okay?
The only thing I applied for was an application to variance in size.
Right.
To my utility trailer is what I should have got to...
Or recreational vehicle.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I got it for, ATVs and cars. I didn't, I didn't buy it originally for a business.
Well...
I don't understand why, it has a side ramp on it because I could put my grandmother's wheelchair on it.
Cars are not something that fall under recreational vehicle.
ATVs are.
ATVs are.
Those have both been on that.
And snowmobiles.
Those have both been on that trailer.
Okay, all right, look, I'm not here to argue with you.
I'm not trying to argue with you, sir, I'm...
I'm telling, I'm pointing out to you some things that you might want to look at in the next month. You don't have to look at them, we'll consider your application. If you want to amend it, feel free to amend it. But at a minimum, we can't consider... But at a minimum, we can't consider it without a statement from your father that allows it to go forward.
I can have that back to you in twenty minutes, sir, if that's beneficial to you.
All right. It's not beneficial to us. It may be beneficial to you.
Okay.
All right.
I'll leave and I'll be right back.
All right. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here that wants to speak? Period. All right. We'll close this case. Oh, can we, just before, Mr. Kriego?
Yes, sir.
One thing that our attorney points out is that if we conclude that you're under the wrong definition and we deny it because it's under the wrong definition, you need to understand that there's a one-year timeframe before you can apply again. So do you want us to go ahead tonight or not?
Do I have to pay another fifty dollars, sir?
No, not if, well.
Mr. Kriego, here's, here's what I'm trying to explain. When I reviewed the section of the law that you have made the application under, recreational vehicle, that does not appear to be the applicable section regardless of.
I understand. I do understand.
So in the first instance, your application, if, if the application were submitted to the board tonight for consideration, and understand to you and to the board, because I give a legal advisory, I'm not taking a position on whether it should be granted or not. This is just my opinion as an advisor to the board. If the board considers the application that you've made tonight as it's been submitted, it would be my recommendation that the board should deny it because it is not a lawful application. Your, your, your facts do not apply to recreational vehicle. Now, what you really are asking for is under the section that's denominated, "Commercial Vehicles." Commercial vehicles doesn't mean that you use those trailers for an income producing. It's just the definition of what you've got there. And I think the dimensions of both trailers should be submitted because the dimensions of the trailers are what determines whether it's legal or not, or at least this board can consider it. If you look under the second section, it's probably a construction equipment or trailers. And those are prohibited in the town to be stored. So you're asking, you're asking for a variance, obviously. Or alternatively, depending upon the dimensions, if it's, if it exceeds, and I'm not going to go through the dimensions, certain dimensions, it's further prohibited. So here's what I'm going to suggest to the board and to you. In any event, you need, you need, you need the consent of the owner.
I understand that.
You need an application that follows the sections of the law. The board always wants to keep an open mind and try as best they can to accommodate an applicant. Okay? To do that, my recommendation to you and the board is that your matter be deferred with your permission for a month to give you an ability to bring your application and your representation into compliance with at least a consideration of the board. In the intervening month, I would recommend that you take whatever, whatever violations may or may not exist, and the town, either the town staff or myself are more than happy to help you do that.
That's just, I don't have the time, sir. I have two kids and all the stuff I'm trying to get done.
Well then, sir, I would respectfully submit that the town may not have time to consider your application. You want it done tonight or would you like to defer?
Well, I understand what you're saying to me, sir. I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way.
We'll consent to a thirty-day postponement.
Sure.
And which time you can reconsider the application.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Got it.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Have a great evening.
You too. We'll close that case again and move on to the next case.
Can I speak on that one?
Close.
Uh, we haven't called the next case, so I'll allow you to come forward. So you fall into the third category, I take it?
I do.
Okay.
My name is Jeff Welch. I live at 78 Dawes Road. I'm two houses away from Mr. Kriego. I came here with an open mind. I was more against it than for it because I read the recreational vehicle part the same way you did. I mean, these are trailers. They're not recreational vehicles. It seems like he's really bit off a lot. I don't quite understand why he's trying to do so much at once. The piles of dirt are undoubtedly an issue in his yard. These are piles the size of cars, two piles.
I saw them.
Each the size of a car. Ultimately though, I'm wondering maybe if a positive resolution for all parties involved would just simply be that he has one trailer. I didn't hear anywhere where he needed two trailers at the same time. So.
Thank you.
Putting that out there for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll call the next case. That was the third category of participant that we had the first time last month. That's why we added that third category.
ZB 1309-6. Upon the matter of request by Susanna Eggman for an area variance to construct a six-foot high fence inside yard in a six-foot high fence on a budding vacant parcel exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 140 and 146 Mailer Drive in our three residential district.
I live at 101 Deardre Drive and she is out of the country right now and asked me to come to represent her. She wants the six-foot high fences.
Let me swear you in first. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And this would be Gus's mom?
I'm her mother.
You're, you're her mother, but Susanna is Gus's mom, right?
Oh, Gus, yes.
Yes. Okay. He was in my cub pack.
Oh.
Many, many years ago.
You're a neighbor.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Um, okay, um, she will be moving back to the country and she will be bringing with her a dog that can easily come over a four-foot fence. And so she feels for the safety of the dog and neighbors perhaps, or any kind of an accident that could happen to the dog or neighbor, she would like to have a six-foot fence.
Now, there's two properties that are here, 140 and 146, but 146 I think it is, is a vacant.
It's a vacant lot.
All right. She owns both of those parcels?
Yes.
Does she intend to combine those two parcels into one parcel for the purposes of taxation and town restrictions?
As far as I know, yes.
All right. Because that makes a difference if in the allowable height, I believe, is lower for a vacant lot than it is for an occupied lot. So if it's all one lot, then it's occupied by the house that right now is on 140 and there's no longer 146.
But I, I would add, she would still need a variance for that, a big portion of that other lot because it's mostly on the side.
But it's the height that's the biggest issue, right?
Well, I'm just saying, a, a big portion of the height would be, still need a variance, even if she put them together.
No, no, but I mean, for the, for her daughter, the big issue is the height of the fence to keep the dog in, right?
Yes, right, right, right. She, she will combine the two. That will be her backyard.
Right. Okay. And then there's a, most of the way around the property, it appeared that there were a lot of very tall hedges and.
Right. They will remain.
Are they going to stay?
Yes.
All right. So the fence would be difficult to see, really.
That's true.
It pretty much covers the whole fence.
Yes. The hedges are taller than the six feet.
Yeah. It looks like you're doing a lot of work on that house.
Definitely.
All right.
I think it will add to the neighborhood. I know it will.
Kind of fence are you putting up?
Either a stockade or there are some in the neighborhood that we've seen, or another one with sort of a basket weave type.
Wooden fence, though?
Pardon?
A wooden fence?
Yes.
When I was there the other day, I.
There are no objections from the neighbors. And the sign has been.
I was, first of all, I had trouble finding which was the front and which was the back of the house because they looked kind of the same.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I was having trouble deciding which was the front and back of the house.
The front of the house is mallard.
The back looks very much like a front, which is fine, but my question is fencing in, that's a pretty large yard out back there to fence in. I mean, it's a pretty good size. But the drawing does not show any fencing across the, I guess where the asphalt driveway is? Is that just going to be open there?
Um.
As far as you know, that's.
Where the driveway is?
Yeah.
Now she'll have to put a fence there.
It's not highlighted because it doesn't need a variance, but there's a fence there.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
It's that thick black line though, right?
Right.
Okay.
So it's a proposed fence, but the gallows part she needs a variance for, for the height. That part could be six feet, the black.
Okay.
So the fence is actually going to be inside all that vegetation that's growing all around the property?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
If it's granted, don't forget the good side has, still has to face out. Is that right?
That is correct, even if it can't be seen.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up, sir.
My name is Herbert White and I live at 154 Mailer Drive, which is right next door to 146 Mailer Drive.
Okay.
I'm Marcia White and I live at 154 Mailer Drive.
Okay.
We have a lot of problems with a six-foot fence because a six-foot fence comes within eight to nine feet from our dining room window.
Seven.
And I have an instrument survey of my property that I brought with me. We've been living at our property for over twenty-six years. We've never had any problems with any of our neighbors. When this person bought the property, whom I do not know, I have never met them, they, I got a, a thing in the mail from the lawyer stating they wanted one more foot off from my property and I needed to sign off from it because they did an instrument survey off Brad Street and I would not sign off on it because my instrument survey is off Pine Hill. And I told them if they wanted to do an instrument survey off Pine Hill, then I would reconsider. I never heard another word. Next thing I know, there's people in here doing construction inside the building. Nothing has been done to maintain the outside of the building. Those bushes are overgrown. They're over the maximum height, I do believe, for a corner lot.
Maximum height of what?
For the bushes. The bushes in the front.
Is there a height restriction on bushes?
We don't have one. Some towns do on corner lots. We do not.
We don't?
Our next door neighbors.
On the other side.
Were sighted by the town of Aranda Coi because their bushes were higher than three feet tall.
Yeah, I think the reason why for that one, they were actually on the town right of way and, and it was causing, I should, I should rephrase that. If any bushes anywhere caused a traffic issue, we could ask them to be trimmed, right Dan?
Okay. And I did. I did in 2010, 2011, and 2012 and nothing was done until 2012 where they came in and because you had to literally go from Brad Street and pull out into Mailer Drive to see past those bushes. They finally came and just took a little tiny bit off the width and that's all that was done. You can't see past those.
Department of Public Works, they send out their crew to check on those requests.
Well. It took them three years.
Okay.
I've brought pictures that I took tonight of my dining room window in, in, in relationship to this fence. My question is, if you look on, there is already a wire fence there. Will that fence be replaced?
Can, can you hand those pictures to Mr. Santora so the.
Yes, I can.
Members of the board can look at those? Thank you.
Would you like my instrument survey also?
We'll return it.
So all the neighbors aren't in favor. Nobody came and talked to us and we are the ones that the fence affects the most. It will devalue our property.
And it's ugly.
And my question is, if it devaluates our property, will the town assessor come and reassess our property for a lower property value because we have a six-foot high fence that's blocking part of our dining room window? This is maybe the backyard, this is not the backyard for them. That is a side yard because the address is Mailer Drive, not Pine Hill. And, and I understand one, one of you gentlemen were talking about, you couldn't tell the difference between the front and the back. The front is on Mailer Drive behind those tall bushes.
It's the front.
That is the front of the house.
Your house is in conjunction to, to, on this side?
Right here, yep.
Where it says, now or formerly Herbert J. White, right? That's you?
That's my name.
Okay. Donna, I have a question. When, if these lots are combined, according to the survey, it'd be a hundred foot square?
That's a good question.
So which would be the front yard then and which would be the backyard? Because right now, sir.
Because they're equal. I, you know, that's a good question because they're equal. Usually it's the more narrow portions of front when they're both equal then, I don't know. That's an interesting question.
All right. Because the, what the front is, is not defined by the street address. It's defined by, the town ordinance says that the front of the house is the narrowest width that's facing the street.
But looking at the property, I think staff would say the front would be Mailer just by the setback is more larger, which is normal for a front setback where a corner lot setback is less.
Okay.
So I think that's how it would be interpreted.
All right. Because that's what I was wanting when you said it's the, I was, got the thinking, would it be the side yard or would it be the backyard?
Yeah.
Is there a distance inside of the property that would not, in your view, affect?
If they put that fence, say twenty, twenty-five feet from my house, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But they never came and talked to me about it. They just went ahead and all of a sudden I get this postcard in the mail and you can understand how being neighbors next door, we feel like we've been put upon by somebody we've never met. From the starts, from the start, they have never lived there. Nobody's lived in that place for three years since the owner went into a nursing home. The only work that's been done on the house is interior, not exterior. They have not maintained the property. The lawn has not been mowed. The bushes have not been trimmed. When you're looking at some of that, you're looking at grapevines that are over on my evergreen trees that have killed my evergreen, those tall evergreen trees.
They were planted by the previous owners. So that's, they're really on the fence. That fence, that old metal fence is not ours. It's really.
It's the property owners of 146 Mailer.
So your instrument survey, if I'm looking at it correct, correctly shows that the, that correctly shows that the, um, that your, the south side, I think it would, yeah, the south side of your house is eight and a half feet from the property line, right?
That's the house, but the little spot that's jilted out there that you see, that's like 1.3 feet or whatever, that is my dining room.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so what you're saying is that if the fence was set in approximately another 10 feet inside the property line, that that wouldn't be a problem for you then?
Probably close to 15 feet would be better.
15 feet, so somewhere between 10 and 15 feet would be alleviate the concern that you have, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
This is your, uh, this is your dining, this is your-
That's my dining room, that's my house, those bushes you see have the metal fence in it.
And you've got how many feet from your wall to your fence?
That's what's on the instrument survey there.
Okay, alright, I'll get to that.
Would look to be about seven.
So that's your driveway side, the opposite side of your house?
It's the opposite side of my house, it's not the driveway side.
It says about eight, eight feet, five inches.
Okay.
Well, I, I also wanted to know if, we still haven't gotten an answer as to, it sounded like they were gonna put this wooden fence up in front of the existing fence, so that then leaves all this
Vegetation.
Vegetation and stuff growing up, there's trees growing up, old boarding over, right over our, our property. It sounds like nobody plans to intend to maintain past that wooden fence, and yet that metal fence that's up there now is not ours.
I'm not sure what you mean.
If you look on the instrument survey, you'll see a wire fence.
Right.
Okay, that's not ours.
It's called a meandering wire fence on the survey, which means that it doesn't, it's not straight.
Right.
Alright.
But it's not our fence.
Right, but I'm not sure what you're talking about in front of and behind the vegetation.
Well, they would be, they would be, if they put it closer towards 140, would they be maintaining that area that's in between the metal fence, the wire fence, and the stockade fence that they wanna put up?
Well, where they're talking about putting it is even with the foundation line of the house on the west side. And that is the furthest towards Mallard Drive that we generally consider for fences. So, it wouldn't be any closer to Mallard Drive than where they're proposing, which I believe is on the east side of the bushes that are tall there, that line Mallard Drive. So, that's still part of their property that they'd be maintaining.
Yeah, I think the question he's saying is if the fence is put here.
Oh, you're talking about if the fence is put 10 feet in the property, are they gonna maintain the 10 feet?
Right, right.
Are they gonna take the other fence down?
And are they gonna take the other fence down?
They're gonna take the other fence down, along with the trees that are hanging over and have killed all my rose bushes and everything else.
Well, as far as trees are concerned and that, we don't get into that.
And the grapevines.
We could, we could condition granting the, that portion of the variance on removing the existing meandering wire fence, that we could do.
And assuming they're doing renovation on this home, it is likely that once they get there, they're gonna do some outside work, but we don't know, because she's not here to discuss it.
Well, renovation on the home's been very slow. How long have they owned this home now?
That I don't know.
I think it's been about a year.
Would appear to be since December, sometime in December 2012, since that's when the survey was done.
And there's only been work crews that go in every once in a great while. There's not a work crew in there every day working.
Well, I don't, again, that's not an issue that's in front of us, but I'm trying to help you deal with the concerns that you-
What I'd want, is I don't want a fence that that's close to my dining room window. That's the bottom line, right there.
I'm sorry, can I see your survey?
You know, that's really where I'm at, you know? You wanna know the bottom line, the bottom line is, the rest of it is, can be dealt with, but I don't wanna fence that close to my dining room window that's six foot, feet high.
Alright, and your, um, your lot is 50 feet wide.
Right, 100 feet deep.
And 100 feet deep, and, um, 146 is also 50 by 100, and 140 is 50 by 100, so when it's combined, it'll be 100 by 100 lot. Alright, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Donna, but development requires a setback of 10% of the front?
10%, the width of the lot?
Width of the lot, right? So that would be a five-foot setback that would be required. So if, if this, um, if 140 was to be developed with a house, it could be put within five feet of the property line.
Correct.
So, my question to you, I guess, is would 10 feet be acceptable for the fence, to you?
15 would.
15 would, but not 10?
Not 10.
Can you explain to me why that five feet difference?
Because, uh, in the, in the way-
Hold on, hold on. Given the fact that if the property were to be developed with a house, the house could be five feet from your property line?
That, that place hasn't been developed in how many years? I've lived there for over 26 years.
That wasn't my-
And you're, and you asked, you asked if you-
That wasn't my question.
But you asked if, about adjoining properties.
My question is, is very specific and limited.
Right.
Alright, you're saying you want 15 feet. I'm saying that if a house were to be built on the property, it could be within five feet of your property line, and I'm asking you to explain, I had suggested 10 as a compromise, and you're indicating that it's 15 and not 10, and I'm asking you to explain that to me in light of the fact that a house could be built within five feet of your property line, which I think would have a much greater impact on your dining room than a six-foot fence.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
So can you explain that to me?
Well, you have me confused, because now you're talking about two parcels of land, and you were just talking about having them joined into one parcel of land.
Right, one of the things that we can do is condition granting the variance on the parcels being joined, alright? Then, that could, if it were to be construed as such, that could mean that the property that abuts your property could be construed as being the backyard of the property. If it were the backyard, a six-foot fence could run right along the property line without any variance being required. If it were built as a house were built, it could be built within five feet of your property line. I'm suggesting that a compromise that accommodates the, your new adjoining owner and your interests is a proposal that would require the fence to be set back 10 feet on the north side from your property line. When I suggested that to you, you seemed pretty insistent on 15, as opposed to 10, and so I'm asking about the difference between 15 and 10. Okay?
I understand.
Because part of what we do in, in, in trying to accommodate things is that we try to grant the least variance that's necessary to balance the interests of one property owner against the interests of another property owner. And we understand what you're talking about in terms of the wire fence and the distance from your dining room, and so I'm trying to get at this distance, because 15 feet is pretty far set back into the property.
Okay, 10 would be fine, huh?
Okay, alright, I just, I, that's what I was curious about.
Just in, uh, doing some quick calculations, Mr. Herbert. If he did get the 15 that he would like, from the home itself, still gives them a 50-foot backyard fenced inside the fence. So, it could've given quite a bit of space if we did agree with him and go with the 15 feet versus the 10. That's quite a bit of backyard.
Don't take issue with that, I was just curious about the 15 versus 10.
My question is, is if you, that, that would not the address change if the, if the front of the house now is on Brad Street instead of Mallard?
No, because it doesn't, the, the property address doesn't have anything to do with what's defined as front and side under the town code.
I just didn't know.
Because my, you know, it really doesn't, I don't think.
My biggest concern is that somebody's gonna take care of that interim space.
Yes.
You're concerned about the distance between their, their property line and where that fence is, whether it's 5, 10, or 15 feet?
That's right.
I'm, yeah, I'm concerned about all the grapevines and the trees, and, and who's gonna maintain that? Because it hasn't been maintained in several years now, and it's really a mess.
Well, that, that's not, fortunately, I guess, that's not an issue that's for us to make any determination.
Alright, okay, alright.
We could make a contingent, uh, or, uh, of the agreement of giving the fence that they would have to do some trimming.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that, okay. Any, anything else, sir?
That'd be it.
Alright, thank you.
Do we get our pictures back?
Uh, they can keep-
Is there, did you get your survey back?
Yeah, I got the-
Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak with respect to the application?
Okay.
And what could, would you like to address?
This is going to be her backyard.
Okay.
I understand she can go right to the lot line. That's how mine is, that's, everybody's on the side.
The question is-
We're all on the lot lines.
Well, what I, and I was asking about that earlier for that very reason, when it's a 100 by 100-foot line, where there's no side of the lot that is narrower in width than the other width, then I'm being told that it may not change it from being a side yard to a backyard. Right now, it would be a side yard, and that's why the variance is required.
Okay.
Alright, so if it were a backyard, that's what I was pointing out to Mr. White, is that if it were a backyard, it could go right up to the back property line. So, in the interest of trying to balance your daughter's interests versus the neighbor's interest to the north, that's why we were having a discussion about 5, 10, and 15 feet, alright? As Mr. Lepary pointed out, if it's a 15 feet, it still gives her a 50-foot backyard, which is a pretty big backyard. And at 10 feet, it's 55, and at 5 feet, it would be 60, and right up to the property line would be about 65. So, we're trying to strike a balance.
I understand. Now, what's gonna happen with that five or 10 feet that's left? It'll be up to them to take care of it then?
No, no, it would be, it's still, it would still be your daughter's property, so she'd still be-
I know, but then it would make it more difficult for her to maintain.
That all depends on how it's, what's done with it.
That's, that's the question I was gonna ask.
Right.
Because when you have a six-foot-high fence up, why would you go to the other side of the fence to maintain it? You can't even see it, right? But the people on the other side of the fence, the Whites, they can see that all the time. And I can understand why it could be considered an eyesore. Now, my question, and if this is too complicated for tonight's meeting, fine. But I had heard that if you, if, just say hypothetically, the Whites take care of that, they clean that out, get rid of the metal fence, plant things, and it really is nice, that after a number of years, it becomes theirs.
Oh, I think you're talking about adverse possession, which I think your, our counsel will tell you is a very, very complicated subject.
That, that thought crossed my mind when you talked about that parcel that would be the responsibility of 140 owners, but it would appear to be the Whites, because it would be sort of contiguous from the Whites. And adverse possession, people always imply, you know, they assume, that's why, in fact, Mr. White got a letter when the house closed, because of the location of that chain-link fence. The short answer, I don't wanna give a lawyer answer, the short answer is adverse possession would, would in all likelihood never come into play, particularly given the nature and the dialogue in this meeting.
Well, I could understand their concern if their driveway were there, and they might feel they couldn't see around it, or something like that, but that's not the case. Driveway's on the other side, on the other street, as a matter of fact, their driveway.
Let me ask you this question. Are you willing to compromise your application by 10 feet?
I can't speak for my daughter about that. I would have to confer with her.
Then we, we could adjourn consideration of the request till our October meeting, and then you could get an answer from her?
Sure.
Okay, alright, so with your consent then, acting on her behalf, what we'll do is we'll postpone this to October, and then you can let us know if she would be willing to compromise the 10 feet. And maybe, two months ago, we had a problem with some neighbors and an applicant. I made a suggestion then, and I'll suggest the same thing to you, and perhaps you and the Whites, even though your daughter's out of town, might sit down so you can give them some indication as to what her plans are for the property, and perhaps that would put their mind at easier, a little more at ease, and you might have a clearer understanding to convey to your daughter of what their concerns are, and steps she might take to alleviate it.
You know, I'm surprised that they never said that wire fence was not theirs. We were under the impression it was theirs.
Well, they've clearly disclaimed any responsibility for it now, so, alright? Sure.
I, I'd just like to make one more recommendation to you in consulting with your daughter, and it is regarding the fence. And if you were willing to acquiesce in that 10 feet or so moving, moving south, the Board under 267B can, can impose reasonable conditions on the granting of an application. So, maybe you would wanna consult with your daughter about an agreement to, to improve the landscape and/or maintain that property that is in question.
She has people who are supposed to be working on it.
I, I understand, but make, make it a little, a little bit more, um, larger in consideration.
All of this, as they said, it was abandoned, actually, for three years, so.
Right, so you've got a lot of work to do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And she's been working on it very slowly, but she has been.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Holy cow. We will close the case on that here. Yes.
ZB 13097, upon the manner of request by Mark Forrest Patrick, Tuxedo K-9 Training Camp, for consent of the Board of Appeals for an outdoor six-foot-high wood, wood fence, area for dogs, Dog Daycare and Training Center in the rear of the building on premises 876, 898 East Ridge Road, Ridge Hill Square Plaza, and the C Commercial District.
Hello, my name is Mark Forrest Patrick, I live at 74 Arbordale Avenue.
Alright, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. When our attorney gets back, I'm gonna ask him to clarify for us what consent means, because I'm not sure what our, it's, you're applying for our consent for this, so. It's not a, it's not a variance, apparently, it's, uh, but it's not a special use permit. It's not anything I've been familiar with so far.
Okay.
It doesn't involve wild animals, though.
No.
Domestic ones, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember all those people that said about their dogs jumping fences?
Yes.
That's why.
They should come and see you, because you'll keep them in a four-foot fence?
Exactly.
Alright, okay. Can you explain to us before we start what our consent means? As opposed to variance, special use permit?
It really, it really, it really means just what it sounds like. The ordinance in this particular case just refers it to you to say whether or not it's okay with you for this property to undergo this transformation. It's different, you're not, you're not being, being held to an area variance criteria or a use variance criteria. You're receiving an application, and you're saying, yep, it sounds good, us will consent, or alternatively, no, it doesn't, we won't, so.
Okay. With that understanding, go ahead.
Okay. The pro, excuse me, the proposed project for the above-mentioned address is a Dog Daycare and K-9 Training Center. The proposed, proposed project entails a wooden fence with lattice work, and I believe that you all have the photographs of the actual fence with the lattice work. The area to be fenced in is a 33 by, 33-foot-by-15-foot area in the back of the building at the address of 876, excuse me, 898 East Ridge Road. The fence will be about five foot tall with a one-foot lattice on the top of the fence. That is basically to keep the dogs from jumping over the fence, as well as it does allow us to put decorative flower boxes on the exterior of the fence, so that when people pull in, the employees of Fontaine Medical Supply, or anyone of that plaza, it is an appealing fence to them with flower boxes.
Now, when I was there, I was trying to figure out where this fence is going to be.
Okay.
I assume it, it's down in the back, right behind the building.
Correct.
And then-
Do you have these, this photograph here?
No, but I saw that today. So there was, there was a garage door
Okay, it's to the-
where Fontaine receives deliveries. It's to the, it's to the west of that?
It's that, um, the top right-hand photo of the display that you have.
Yep.
Where you see the green grass?
Yep.
Okay, in that photograph, that is the area that will be fenced.
Oh, okay, alright.
And it will go from the wall, the supporting wall, all the way out to the edge of the sidewalk. sidewalk.
The edge by the parking lot?
Correct.
The curb part of it?
It will not go, it will not cover the curb.
On your-
Or cover the sidewalk.
On your hand up, the last page is a pretty good map. It kind of shows it goes up to the sidewalk.
Correct, it's gonna go right up to the edge of that grass. Inside the fence. And the gas meters that are there will be exposed and will not be as in, in, in the There will be on the, in that photograph, right there on the edge of that pillar, there is going to be an exit gate for, you know, just in case fire emergency exit. We will have access out, as well as people have access in, because all of the dogs that will be in that area will be supervised and controlled.
So, the animals come out from these doors?
They come out from that, the second door in this picture. Correct, they're gonna come out that door. And the exit coming in for clients will be the door on the left that is partially in the picture.
Looks like it's a double door, and, and where the ramp is?
I'm sorry?
Where the ramp is, from the-
The ramp. Oh, yeah, that is a double door, yes.
And that's where the people would come?
That is where the people will come. And then if you look at the picture below that, where you see the double doors, correct, right where your finger is, that double door is where the dogs are gonna come out to the daycare. That's Fontaine Medical Supply, Beauty Shop, Chiropractic Blockbuster. Fontaine's delivery is on the left-hand side of me, and on the right-hand side is a storage unit, and I don't know what else is in there other than a storage unit.
Do you have the whole length?
No, I have those two doors right up to the gas meter. I have a total of approximately 42 under square foot.
So, I can take it, then there'll be a fence going, closing that off too, then? Are these dogs actually deported, or?
No, we are not gonna be doing boarding, we're only daycare and training.
Any other questions? Will, will there be some type of flooring put down for the dogs, or is it gonna stay the sidewalk and the grass, or?
There's going to be, on the, the grass is gonna stay, and where the sidewalk is, there's going to be like some pebble gravel, gravel on it, so that we can, it's easier for us to clean and sanitize, so that if the pebble becomes dirty, we remove it and dispose of it according to environmental codes, and then we replace it. And the area will, the outdoor area will be cleaned every single time that a dog eliminates. There will be no waste left in that area at, at any time.
You've, you've got some letters from folks who are in favor of your proposal. In talking to the neighbors there, were there any opposed to it?
No, they're all aware, I've been there quite a bit of the la- of the last couple of weeks, and they're all very aware of what I'm gonna be doing. Many of them do have dogs and are very interested to see the final outcome.
By neighbors, you're talking about the businesses that are upstairs?
Upstairs, yes.
And then next door is the church, and the other side is a Chinese or some-
Correct, and then behind me is an empty field.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
My name's Susan Bachman, and I live at 45 Sherwood Avenue, Webster. I'm here to speak. My husband's here, too. We're, we're Arundicoyt business people. We own a service station on St. Paul Boulevard, B&amp;B Automotive, and we're very excited about having Mark join the Arundicoyt business community, as I think you will be, too. I'd like to share some more comments about Mark with you, so you know the type of man wanting to be part of your business community. First of all, anything Mark does, he does with style and class. He plans the flower boxes. He wants it aesthetically nice for everybody. And when he says those dogs will be cleaned up after, they will be cleaned up after. I met Mark because I am the volunteer coordinator for Joyful Rescues in the Rochester area. We have a team of about 200 volunteers right in the Rochester area, 50 in Buffalo, another 50 or so in the southern tier, and many of our volunteers are clients of Mark's. Several of them are here today to attest to his professionalism. He believes in the positive reinforcement approach, which is the gentle reward-type training, not the aggressive, hit the dog, pull on the leash type of training. So, he's a very passive, compassionate person. He is also a very strong advocate for animal rights and opposes puppy mills in New York State, and has been with several of us from Joyful, who went to lobby with the ASPCA in Albany against puppy mills. We're now waiting for the success of our visit, that bill to be signed by the governor so that local communities can have more regulation over breeders and pet dealers in their areas. Mark is very well-known throughout New York State. He will bring business to your community. He is an animal rights advocate. He works closely with Beverly Animal Shelter in Waterloo, with Verona Street Animal Shelter here in Rochester, Joyful Rescues down in the southern tier in Cuba, New York, and many other rescues. He's also an extremely charitable gentleman. He holds walks weekly, pretty much in season when the weather permits, taking donations from people who come to join to walk their dogs, and each time, he donates a different animal rescue organization to benefit from those donations. He also will travel some distance to, for no fee, put on training demonstrations with different pet-related groups, such as our Pet Fest down at Joyful Rescues. He drove over two hours the last two years to do demonstrations with all our guests on pet training and how to deal with special needs animals, not just your typical pet smart trainers who use the clicker, or this is what you do in Lesson A, this is what you do in Lesson B. Mark has the expertise to work with special needs dogs, to work with puppy mill dogs, dogs who have been abused and traumatized. He knows what it takes to work with these animals. And a side of him that you may not know, and he doesn't always put out there, as I know, that he does, out of his own pocket, often pull out money to help people who are so in love with their pets and in a hard financial spot, and that animal needs a life-saving procedure done, and Mark will put out pleas, and he will pull from his own pocket to help people get things done so that they can keep their pet. I think you are very fortunate to have him want to establish in Arundicoyt. I wish, for selfish reasons, it was gonna be in Webster, but people from Webster will have no problem traveling to Arundicoyt to support his business here, and I'm very anxious to support him and help celebrate a grand opening, hopefully, very soon. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Hi, my name is Tom Zachman. I'm a resident of Webster. I'm a client. I have a special needs dog, a puppy mill dog from Ohio. She's blind and fearful. She loves Mark. She does whatever he tells her to do. And my wife and I love Mark, and everybody I know loves Mark. And that's about it.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Don't be bad, so you can line up right next to the podium if you'd like.
Stampede.
May I run for election?
Yeah, great, yeah.
My name's Lynn Rathgen. I live at 138 Berry Road in Arundicoyt. Mark also works with my dog. I think, just to address the issue of the fence and that area, and why I think it's crucial if you're gonna be running a daycare, the dogs are allowed to eliminate outside, I would strongly urge you to consent to his request. I think that's a healthier way for dogs to go to a daycare center. Thank you.
My name is Scarlett Hart, and I live at 52 Winchester Road here in West Arundicoyt. And I know Mark because Mark has helped me train my dog. I have had several dogs in a past life, and this guy is awesome. He would be an awesome asset to the community. I hope you just vote in favor of his fence, because that's all that's keeping him back. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Layton. I live at 642 Elmwood Terrace in the town of Brighton. And I support Mr. Patrick for his work, for his passion with dogs, and also his ability that he individuates the training that's needed for dogs. I've been a client of his, and I've seen him take a dog in a puppy training class that's literally quaking, because it's shy or rescue or whatever, and literally can individuate the treatment and approach to that dog so that it's learning the behaviors to be a socially acceptable dog and safe and be a social animal. So, I highly encourage you to support this man's request.
My name is Paula Harris. I live in Brighton. I am also a client of Mark's, my, myself and my little dog, Odie. Mark was first recommended to me by a veterinarian who does work at the Verona Street Shelter, and she was absolutely straight on about Mark. And when Mark says, or the previous person says, the reason for the fence is so the dogs can be outside and eliminate. And when Mark says it's going to be cleaned up, you know it's going to be cleaned up. And when you say it's gonna be supervised, Mark will not have anything other than that, because he is so conscientious about taking the best possible care of everybody's four-legged children and what's in the best benefit for them. And I think he would be a wonderful asset, and he's just a wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Does anyone wish to speak to this application?
You opened yourself up for that one.
Yes, I did. Alright. Is there anything else that you wish to add, Mr. Patrick?
Um, no, I'm not running for political office. Sorry, this is a, a little overwhelming. One thing that I will say about the fence is that it's, it's really important for the fence, for the basic well-being of the animals. When dogs come to daycare, and they eliminate inside of a daycare, and they go home, and the owners all of a sudden have a dog eliminating in their home, in their carpet, and then they end up in shelters because they can't housebreak them, because they're going to a daycare that doesn't have a space where they can eliminate outside. You're counter-training those dogs to eliminate inside, and that's why a fence is a requirement for me to do business. It's not an option.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a, just a question. Is that gonna be enough space? Do you feel it's enough space? What you're fencing in? I mean, how many dogs will be out there at a time?
We're gonna, the way that I'm designing the interior of it, the, there's going to be large breeds and small breed, and the way that it's designed, excuse me, they're gonna have about 10 to 15 dogs that are gonna go in there. It's not gonna be for them to play in, it's basically for them to run out, be supervised, and then run back in after they've eliminated. And then they're gonna have the rubberized floor and, you know, the space inside.
Alright, and it was pointed out earlier that if we give you consent for this, that the good side of the fence has to be on the outside. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We will close the hearing with respect to this case, and I believe the next, I think that was all that was on our agenda, and then we have a tabled case that we need to, is there a motion to remove case ZB 1307-6 from the table? It's a move. And it's seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six in favor, no opposed, and one member of the board is absent. So, we will consider the next case.
Case ZB 1307-6, request by Trinity Community Church for a use variance to lease a portion of the building to operate a daycare facility on premises 759 Winona Boulevard in R1 Residential
My name's Eric Okren, and I am the pastor at Trinity Community Church.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, and I'll add, so help me God.
Okay, that's fine.
In terms of, you know, my understanding, it was unfortunate set of circumstances that I couldn't be here to attend the, the July meeting, and it became very, it became clear very quickly that what I failed to do the first time around was to provide the neighbors around the 759 church property, Winona Boulevard church property, with a sufficient description of what we intended to do. And I, I've said to several folks, as I've, I've done some, some various action steps to mitigate that, that I, I think it can be said that I've learned some of the greatest lessons in my life by some of the most foolish things that I've done, and that is very true in this case as well. So, since the July meeting, what, what we've done is three, three things in particular I'd like to present, and I wonder, were you able to review each of those three items and the outcomes of those? Okay. The, the first thing that we did in mid-August, we mailed 136 letters to the community on the surrounding streets, Winona Boulevard, Chapel Hill, and Chestnut Hill, and we received relatively quickly after that, some phone calls from folks saying, "Thank you very much. This was greatly, greatly clarified what you were proposing." And then, as a follow-up to that, I committed to spending approximately 15 to 20 hours walking throughout the community, going door to door as an act, second action step, and just saying to people, "Did you receive the letter? And did you have any questions about the letter? Was it, did it clarify, were there still concerns remaining?" And, and to be fair, you know, there certainly was a, a segment of, of our neighbors who, who did have some concerns about some traffic and what that would mean for them. You know, I have four children myself. I have a four-year-old, a five-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a nine-year-old. We live on a street similar to St. Paul, and it's off of that street is a, you know, in our residential area, and I'm always concerned about additional traffic. And what I said to them was, "I, I understand. You know, I, I can't control some of those things in terms of traffic, but what I can do constructively is help facilitate and communicate with the people who may be additional traffic, if we're granted a use variance, to, you know, slow down, make sure that they adhere to the speed limit, be considerate of the neighbors." And then, thirdly, or actually, it's an outcome of the, the second action step in going around, you know, I was able to gain 49 signatures from the community, and I walked about a quarter mile in each of the different streets. And one of the most encouraging things to me, to our, to our church, and, and to the owners of the, the proposed preschool, excuse me, school-age program for kindergartners in West Arundicoyt, is that there are folks who are here the first time around who, with the clarification, with appropriate information, accurate information, said, "That's, geez, that sounds like a, something the community could use." There is certainly a, a need in West Arundicoyt for moms and dads who have sons and daughters going- going into kindergarten to have a good place for their son or daughter in the opposite half-day kindergarten program. It's not intended to be for anyone else other than West Arundicoyt families. And I think that was one of the primary concerns as I understood it. And if one of those kids in kindergarten has an older sibling, then a wraparound program is proposed also by Close to Home. So I was delighted to hear from the community that those efforts to describe what we wanted to do accurately, because there was a void of information the first time around, was very helpful to them. And I did bring a copy of the 49 signatures if you folks would like to review that with the addresses. And then finally, as a third action step, in the letter that I sent out, we said we'd like to hold a town hall style meeting in the church so that if there are any additional things that you'd like to communicate, keep the communication open because that was a major problem the first time around. You know, we want to be good neighbors. And if I could just, you know, as I understand this and I've learned a lot about town law and zoning types of applications, it's been a real learning curve for me. And I do understand that there really is a need to demonstrate a hardship. And I believe that Scott Schwab, our treasurer who came last time, was able to present that information to you. And I do feel he did an adequate job as I reviewed with him that aspect. But this part that he wasn't able to present, which is more my, you know, the personal side, I've spent the last 14 years working with children in elementary schools as a school psychologist. And I just resigned this past June to become the pastor at this church. I spent eight years as the youth director for our church junior high and senior high. And, you know, I've worked with kids my whole professional career and worked with families to support them and worked in the educational system. And I've worked with several teachers from, who live in West Arundicoyt, who work in the Spencerport School District where I was a school psychologist. And I know this is a need in the community. And it's consistent with the mission of a church. All four of my children, we had to find a place for them to go to preschool, and all of those places were hosted by a church facility. One of the things that I said at the town hall style meeting is, there's a, kind of on a macro level, there's a trend of a decrease in church attendance across the country, if you pay attention to the news. And buildings are getting older and attendance is decreasing. We have not, we've been consistent with that trend. In the last five years, our attendance has decreased by 30%. And, you know, our, the costs to support the church are supported by donations that were received from the parishioners. And we have a projected 18% decrease this year over the average of the last four years. And that's a big chunk of change to make up. You know, you hear politicians talk about plucking all the low-hanging fruit. You know, first, we plucked that. And we had to do some deep cuts in our church. And I assure you that those cuts were painful to some families. And we're really trying to do something with this school age program that will both be consistent with the mission and vision of a church, my own personal passions as somebody who's a pastor in the community. It's been a real joy to get to know the neighbors around the church as I've pursued clarification. And I'm just excited about the possibility. And I do hope that you consider the proposed use variance. Any questions?
As I was looking over the list of people who, the 49 signatures that you passed around, I noticed that many of them, I recognized as people who spoke at the July meeting. And it's nice to see that you were successful in helping your neighbors understand what the project was about because I had a sense in July that there was a gap between what your intentions were and what they thought you were talking about. So thank you for taking that effort.
Indeed. It was well worth it to meet the many people personally. You know, secondary gain in all of this has been that I've got to meet a lot of the neighbors and it's been constructive. So I agree.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just have one. I know you mentioned in the paperwork here that there's going to be a loss as far as the revenue without this venture that you're trying to do. Would that overcome the loss or in a plus side?
It will, it will, it will make up for more than 50% of the loss. Yeah.
So it's not going to be 100%?
It's not going to be 100%, but, you know, I'm a believing man and I'm the new guy in town and I'm hoping that the church grows and that's some other ways that it grows. So if anybody's looking for a church to attend, 759 Winona Boulevard, 10 o'clock AM Sunday Mass.
Do you want to put the email address and the phone number onto his log?
I figure this is being publicized for the next month, right? So.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hello, my name is Ken Cronin. I live in 772 Winona Boulevard. In fact, my house, I didn't take a photo or anything for this, but my house looks right down on Chapel Hill Drive and then just to the left is the church. We moved in July last year with my wife and two children. We have a five-year-old and a two-year-old from New York City. We moved and picked Arundicoyt from the web and our research for some named Rochester's, you know, one of the top places to raise children. And then we started looking at Brighton, Pittsburgh, and fell in love with Arundicoyt. And we looked at houses and, you know, saw this house in Winona Boulevard, fell in love with it. Beautiful view of the church and we moved in there. You might tell from my accent that I'm Irish, so I'm actually Catholic, but I'm not a parishioner of the church. I'm not practicing Catholic. So my whole motivation for coming here is more like, you know, just first of all aesthetically, I look at the church every day. And I've seen many churches fall apart. Even though that church is in Ireland, we would call it a brand-new church because it's only, you know, 80, 90 years old. But, you know, these churches need upkeep. And it's a beautiful church. We enjoy it. Our living room looks right onto it and then we have an outdoor patio and we look right out onto the, onto the church and we really enjoy the view of it. So the reason why I came was because the first time I met Eric, actually, he came across, he wasn't wearing his clergy, clerical uniform at all. He had a T-shirt on and I thought, "Who is this guy coming over to me?" I was cutting my roses. And he told me about what they were going to do because I saw the planned ordinance change. And I was relieved. I was like, "Oh, my God. Thanks, big God. I thought you were going to build an apartment building or something right there, you know, and that's it, a daycare." And he was like, "Yeah, sure, no problems." And then I think last month, they had a barbecue or a family, like a neighborhood barbecue thing. So they had a bouncy castle, so my five-year-old and two-year-old wanted to go there, so we went over. And I asked Eric again, "How is it going?" And he told me that there was some issues and that. And I said, "And you're only serving, there was no beer, there was just lemonade." But I said, somehow I said, "Oh, I'll turn up at the meeting and, you know, voice support" because a lot of times people will turn up and say, "No." And I firmly believed that would be a good thing. So my, the reasons why I liked the idea of the daycare is several-fold. First of all, is the upkeep of the church. You know, we are looking at the church. And as Eric says, they have financial problems. That's pretty much universal for the last five years for everybody that realize donations from people because times are hard. So first of all, we're looking at a church. We'd like to see the upkeep kept. Secondly, we have two children of our own and we've actually tried the daycares here in Arundicoyt. And they're very big and very, our boy had a lot of problems. He's in Briarwood School now, fortunately, but he had a lot of problems. He was in classrooms where there was 18 children and there was two teachers, so it was legal. But one teacher attends to one child and now it's 17 to one teacher. And one of the things that impressed me with Eric's program was is that, I think it's nine children?
There'd be no more than 14 children in a, yeah.
Total?
Yeah, with two adults with those kids, yeah.
And there's several rooms, right?
Yep, there's multiple rooms.
Yeah. So I think one room would be nine children and then smaller rooms then, right?
Yeah, the town, the fire marshal, Greg, Gary?
Greg Merrick.
Greg Merrick.
Yeah, yeah. He came through and all the code, what we can do by square footage with the proposed space, nursery space, and some of the classrooms and the educational room, you can only have so many kids.
If you could step up closer to the microphone so the people who watch it on the replay...
There are limitations on how many children you can have by square footage for a proposed program such as this. So we're bound by the space.
That's under the Office of Children and Family Services, right?
Yes, and I think that, I think that the state, there's two agencies that do that.
So that's very positive because our two-year-old will be, you know, we'll probably be looking at, if it does, we'll be looking at their program for our two-year-old. The other thing is, is when it comes to traffic, actually, we're most directly related or affected of all the places, we're most related because our house, when the cars come up the hill, the light shines right into our house. So at nighttime and in the mornings, now the winter months, we get just every car that comes up, we get the glare of it. So I've been paying attention about fences and ordinances and that and, you know, getting permits and that. But eventually I'm going to put bushes or something to try and block this because it's, you know, it can be a little bit annoying sometimes. So we, and we have two children, so we're very conscious about traffic and we would never put our kids in jeopardy knowingly. I don't believe that this would add anything extra to the amount of traffic that's going up and down the hill. And then lastly, the thing is, is like, I think sometimes it's sad to see such a beautiful church and so not used. You know, I mean, we look out at it every day and it's pretty much dead, you know, until Sundays. And then his congregation's very quiet and they park very peacefully and they've been very good and good neighbors. They never parked in front of our house once and they have plenty of parking in the back. But it's just, you know, to me, it's not a, having grown up Catholic, it's not a very Christian thing to have a big building like that and have it empty six days of the week and then have it open for now and a half. And we have a saying in Ireland, and I think it's applicable to this church as it is to the Irish expression, the Irish expression is, "Bricks and mortar make a house, but the sound of children's laughter make a home." So, you know, what's better than to have some children running around? And you should see it. Actually, when I went to the barbecue, Eric brought me down, showed me the setup and it's wonderful. You know, they have, you know, it's just as good as any of the daycare centers already that I've been to. So I just wanted to voice my positive opinion of it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak with respect to the application? Back to, in favor? Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I didn't jump up quite quickly enough.
It's all right.
I'm Ed McLennan and I live at 80 Chapel Hill Drive. I think everyone should come to one of these zoning boards at some point and listen to how things develop. And what you take away from it, I think, is all these disputes could be resolved by having a difficult conversation. And I think what Pastor Eric has learned is that having the conversation with the neighbors is, has really made my opinion completely turned around in many of my neighbors. I fully support what they're doing at this point. I had some significant concerns at the July meeting. I expressed them. I also, being the lawyer that I am, pointed out he didn't meet the criteria for use variance. I've actually tried to coach him along a little bit on that to help understand that the board has got criteria that they have to follow and how is this going to work? And I think the bigger picture is something is going to be there, whether it is the church or if we tear down the church and put apartments there, if that's permitted in R1, something's going to be there. And I think I'd rather have the church there with good neighbors. And I hopefully, they have a robust congregation and can be there indefinitely. I hope that the use criteria is looked at from, not an attorney's point of view, but from a layman's point of view. Because the biggest criteria is, is looking at all the uses for the R1. And I've talked with Father Eric about this and it all really, really comes down to, there's a big physical space that substantial investment of time and money would have to take place to fit it into other uses in R1. I personally can't see any reasonable return on that investment, certainly not with the congregation size that they have now. I do believe that limiting the children to our neighbors and our friends and families is a great idea. My family personally doesn't need the wraparound care, but I would have no problem taking my kids there at this point after talking with Eric. I hope the board can support this. I hope that if there's any questions that anybody has, that I can help answer and I'm sure that Father Eric will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
Hi, I'm Ann Simon. I live at 220 Chestnut Hill Drive, which is right across the street from the church. I'm on the corner of Chestnut Hill and Winona. So my, my whole side yard, my side yard and then my entire backyard face the church and the front church parking lot. My issue isn't at all with the program. It sounds like a lovely program. It's more with the traffic, the busing, the number of children. I did go to the meeting last week and it was a little different. I didn't understand it completely until I went there and I felt better about some things, worse about others, mostly about the 14 kids that we have in the morning, and they could have 14 kids in the afternoon, plus up to 12 siblings. And all of those kids could go before and after school. So all the children could go before school and then be picked up by buses to go to whatever respective schools they go to in Arundicoyt, any of the, I think it would include eight schools. And then 14 of those kindergartners could come back at noon and 14 of them leave by bus again. And then all of those students could come back after school by the buses again from eight different schools for 40 kids there in the afternoon to be then, again, picked up by their parents after work. So I think it's a substantial amount of traffic that would go right mostly down our street and around that corner there where the traffic is already, you know, people drive too, too fast. And the drop-off and pickup point has changed since the last meeting too. It was going to be down, down Chapel Hill, around the back is what was intended. Now it's not. It's going to be right there at the side on Winona, which again is right across the street from my house, my yard, my deck. Everything in the backyard overlooks right there where the small parking lot is and...
You're on the northwest corner?
I'm on the northeast corner. Yeah, northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Right. So my driveway, the side of my house, my backyard faces church.
Abuts the church.
Is across the street from the church.
Across the street from the church.
Yeah. The side of my house is on Winona. The front of my house is on Chestnut Hill.
Okay.
The side in my backyard is on Winona.
All right.
Facing the church.
All right. Now I get it.
Presently, there's no school buses that go down your street at all?
No, there are a couple of school buses, but it would be specific school buses only for, say Briarwood for the elementary, whereas if students are bussed in, there are six, I think, neighborhood schools. So they could be bussed in from any of those schools. So definitely, I would think if any of the students weren't from Briarwood, would be increased busing. It could be, like I said, 40 after school. I know now they intend not to have any sort of stationary climbing things or fences or anything like that.
I'm confused as to how you get to 40.
14, 14 sibling, older siblings.
14 and 12?
14 in the morning, 14 in the afternoon, and then is it up to 12 siblings is what was talked about at the meeting.
There's one section, if you look at the blueprint of the building that was submitted last time, the fellowship hall of the church is also approved as space for the wraparound. So there could be, it's designed, the nature of the program is designed for kindergarten, little boys and girls in kindergarten. And then if there is a sibling, as I was saying earlier, or two, or three, you know, they could go to the program. There would have to be a sibling of one of the students in the program in order to have access to the wraparound. It's not open to anybody else. But, you know, I don't disagree with Ann. You know, we've had some difficult conversations and some good conversations.
I thought you said there was a limit of 12 on the siblings.
I don't fully understand... I don't fully understand that number.
I think that came from Kristen, the, the woman who's opening the daycare.
I can say it as simply as, just with respect to my understanding, that there can be up to 14 kids in the AM, 14 kindergarten kids in the AM, 14 kindergarten kids in the PM, and then as many as 40 kids in the other space in the building that's been approved by the, the code for the zoning, the, the fire marshal and those folks. So that's a space square footage type of a thing as well. Now, that, the, that is a, that's a maximum. And, and one of the things that Kristen articulated at the town hall style meeting was that the intention is not to grow massive and try to max out. You know, they, they have more of a perspective of let's, let's pilot this, let's start small, let's do it well. They're both educators, she and her husband, the folks that they hire are, are certified teachers as well. And I think that they're, they're very sensitive to some of those needs and, and one of the, the proposed, one of the things that we discussed at the town hall style meeting was the traffic. And, and we would do everything, you know, within our power to help solve that particular concern. I mean, legit, I sincerely mean that. I myself drive very slow through there now that I know that it's a concern. I'm communicating to my parishioners, we need to be careful and sensitive to the residential area. And what Kristen had shared was those families, and the majority of her clientele are West Aronakoi teachers. You know, I, I think they're reasonable, intelligent folks who are educating the children in West Aronakoi, that if we said to them, listen, this is a residential area, we have, I think, was it, is it 13 children below the age of, in, in that area? So I'm, I'm trying to absorb the, the information about the community. If we can say to the, we have 13 kids in this stretch, in this span, I don't know what the zone, the route will be for the buses. I think they need to decide, is it going to come from the other side? Is it going to come from this side? Because there is more than one entryway to, to our church on Winona Boulevard versus Chestnut Hill. We don't know what the bus routes will be yet with, with all due respect to that concern. But like I was saying a few moments ago, we will communicate with the parents, you know, of these children as best we can to say, you need to drive slow, be sensitive to the concerns of the residents.
Where, where?
Present the speed limit, do you know?
I don't know, what's the speed limit?
Is it 25 in the resident, like, it's not posted, but.
Already 25.
I, I'm guessing it's 25, there's not a sign there or anything.
Where, where do you plan on turning the buses around?
Well, there, if you, are you, are you folks familiar with the property?
Yes.
So if you're, Anne's, Anne and David, her husband's side yard, backyard is directly crossed from the front entrance and a parking space. So there are several parking spaces right there. And the, I think the hope is that the bus would pull off of the street so there'd be no impediment to normal traffic. The bus would pull off of the street into our parking space in front of our church to do the drop-off and pickup of, of the children.
So they wouldn't be, uh, my understanding was the entrance to the daycare was going to be down around back.
That's what it was last time, that's what they said, but.
So if it's down around back and they're dropping them off out front.
I know that the, well, the, the entryway that the, the entryway that we'd like to use, that, that the daycare provider would like to use for the children is up top. And her staff would park down below, as I understand it, at present. I can speak to my, my present understanding of things.
Okay, because I, I guess was a little misunderstanding of the thought that the entrance or the drop-off. As a matter of fact, I, I thought I read it in, in this paperwork that there was going to be a sign put above the door, a plaque put above the door in the back showing the entrance.
It's not the main door, it's a side door in the front of the property that's going to be used, not in the back of the property, because we're actually, I, I think, yeah, I, that's what I know at this point. Yeah, that's, that's the hope, that's the intention.
I think it's off the sidewalk here, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they park in the front and they go into the side door.
Yeah, then the main door's here and then there's a door right here.
So there's a parking space here.
Not, not far away at all.
And then the side door is here.
Right, that's where I was.
The main entrance, because the, the educational one and the nursery and the proposed classrooms are right down the steps.
Right, that's where I was.
So the access for, for the children is.
Should I continue or?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm concerned about the buses at three different times a day. The letter they sent out to all the neighbors, she indicated she thought it would just be an additional bus stop on the bus that goes by there anyway, which I don't see, unless all the students were from the one neighborhood school where we are, I don't think that would be the case at all. Also, the neighbors that I've spoken with, actually, some of the neighbors that I've spoken with, none of them were understanding that it could be more than 14 kids there at a time either. They all hand their heads that it could be 14 kids there in the morning, 14 kids in the afternoon, not thinking that they could all be there in the morning before school, all be there afternoon, after school and be bussed there and then to be picked up after work by their parents or whoever. I'm also concerned about, we talked about fences and stuff like that, Kristen does, did, and I completely believe that they have no intention of doing that now. I do worry about later, if they change their mind, if they're free to then put up fences, if parents say, well, you've got a great program, but I'm concerned about my kids playing outside, you know, by a street where there's no fencing. And they encourage them to put up a fence in order to get children to go there. You know, can they change their mind on things like that and then add things? Or if in future years, say Eric's not there or somebody else is running the program, I understand that a variance does go along with the property. So if they decide to not stay true to the vision that Pastor Eric has, how they can change things then. Also, the, the variance, unless it's changed since last time, it had hours on it of 6:30 in the morning to 7 o'clock at night. Now they're indicating it's more 7 to 5 or something. So I don't know if that gets amended or if, if it would be 6:30 in the morning to 7 o'clock at night.
Yeah, that was a, that was a, that's not accurate. It will, it will end at 5:30, 7 PM as indicated in the application. I, and certainly I could submit something additional in writing or have Kristen submit something.
Okay. I think that's about it. I hate to, they've been a good neighbor, we try to be a good neighbor to the church. I hate to be opposed to something, but I'd hate not to state my opinion and then regret it later when there's all sorts of traffic and busing going around the corner. Because I'd have a hard time believing that it wouldn't be right down Chestnut Hill and around Winona on the corner, that that's where the bus is, at least in or out. I can't imagine that that wouldn't be the way that they'd go. That's where the light is on St. Paul, it's a wider road than the other neighboring streets. So, you know, and just the character of the neighborhood, we have a nice, quiet neighborhood full of stay-at-home moms, our kids are there. I think the traffic would be there mostly when our kids are traveling to and from school, when they get home from school, that's when most of the traffic will be there and we're there with the kids outside too. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
My name is Alvy Casetta and I reside at 233 Chestnut Hill Drive. There's another family that wasn't able to make it this evening, but they wrote a letter to the board, so I'd like to pass it over. A lot of my concerns are the same as Anne's. I did also attend the neighborhood meeting last week. There are several K through three elementary schools in the district, in just West Aronakoi. I think there would be more than one bus, definitely. There are 13 children, as she had mentioned, between the corner of St. Paul and that turn for Winona. Two of them are mine and they are outside. I have a young one who is six and he is outside every day, all day, any minute that he has. Can I ask any of my neighbors, they probably, almost everybody on the street knows him because he socializes with everyone. I am very concerned about the increased traffic. He is supervised, but, you know, I do have concerns, there's just a lot, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there right now that uses it as a cut-through. My house is situated right before that turn. I do believe that many and most of those buses come off of St. Paul or will be coming off of St. Paul, driving by that first section of houses there onto Winona to get down to the church and access the church. I think there is still some confusion. My other concern is about the numbers. We were told, you know, Pastor Eric said 14 children, 14 children, the fire marshal said 14, but then we went to this meeting and the daycare director, Ms. Bella Covini, I believe is her name, said up to 40 as well, like Anne is mentioning, that just, the numbers don't seem to make much sense to me. And again, I'm concerned about what if? If we pass it now and everybody agrees to this, what if later on they decide to change it? You know, that's not really what we're looking for. The aesthetics of the church, it is a beautiful church. I have no problems with the church, I like being their neighbor. We moved through the street five years ago. I had planned to live here, you know, for the rest of my life. We've done several improvements to our home and I don't plan on moving anytime soon. And some of the neighbors have said that, you know, if this happens and this is not a good mix, we would consider moving, which is, you know, changing the aesthetics of the neighborhood, which I don't think any of us have any intentions of doing. We are a very close-knit community. There were several people here initially and unfortunately, I think the, the, some of the people who have had a change of heart are not exactly immediately affected by this because they don't live on that portion of Chestnut Hill. I think the ones of us, those of us that are here and who have followed through with meetings up to this point are the ones that are directly affected by this, you know, variance. So, and my other, and my other concern too, like Anne said, I guess I'm not, I guess I need some clarification on the use variance as opposed to, is this going to be now considered a commercial?
No.
Property? No, it's just a use variance? Okay.
But the, the use variance allows them, if, let me put it this way, they wouldn't have had to come to us at all if it was a not-for-profit daycare.
And you know, I wish you, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Sixty or eighty people.
When you said that at the first meeting, I think you scared some of the people off by saying that. I get if the church goes out of business, what if? But I don't see that space as being large enough. And the reason, one of the main reasons why they drop, they changed the drop-off and the pickup area is because it's not up to code. They cannot drop off the children at the first designated area.
I think you're misunderstanding what I was saying. What I was saying is that the reason they need a use variance is because it's a commercial operation that's being operated in the building.
Right.
If it was a not-for-profit.
Yeah.
Operation.
They wouldn't have to have a variance.
They wouldn't have, they wouldn't need a variance.
I get it.
And they would only be subject to whatever other requirements there are that are out there that, I don't know what they are, but they probably from the Department of Social Services and Office of Children and Family Services. So it's, it's only, it's not the way that the building is.
Okay.
Being used, it's.
Yes.
On what level, commercial versus not-for-profit.
And that comment that you had made about the nonprofit, if a nonprofit was to approach the church, if the church went out of business, or what if a nonprofit and somebody had brought up, I think you mentioned like, hey, if a charter school wanted to come in, they don't have to do any of this stuff. Well, they have put in a lot of the neighbors' heads, oh my gosh, I don't want inner-city kids, excuse me if this sound politically correct, but I don't want all these strange people coming to our neighborhood. And they all flipped out and they thought, oh, great, what's better? Having this daycare for the, you know, children of educators coming and neighborhood people as opposed to, you know, oh my gosh, you know, it kind of startled and I think shook some people up. So unfortunately, I, I don't think that was received in a positive light and may have scared some people away.
It's a, it's one of the things though that you do need to take into account when you're dealing with it, is that if, what the church is indicating is that if this is denied, that they're not able to realize a reasonable rate of return on the property. If they're not able to realize a reasonable rate of return on the property and they are not able to continue to occupy the property, then you have to consider what might go in there in place instead of a church. And it's very limited in R1. They, their submission indicates that they paid $475,000 for the property. So I doubt that the property would be converted to a single-family residence at $475,000 purchase price.
I understand that.
So then you get into, would it be a multiple residence? Would it be, it, it's not going to be used as a firehouse? It might be used as a, a different kind of a church perhaps, that's a permitted use, could be used as a school, could be used as whatever's permitted in R1, which is very restricted. And when you get into not being able to realize a reasonable rate of return for the uses that are permitted, that's where you then get into opening the door to other things that generally you would not find in that kind of a community. So it is a consideration that you need to take into account. And I see that the church has been working with the neighbors and that's the kind of thing that's helpful and can continue to have the dialogue and as things work out, it may not be as bad as you thought and it might be as bad as you thought and then you, you work with them if it's granted. But, I mean, that's, that's why that was put out there is because that is a consideration that you do need to take into account. What are the possible alternatives?
I just, I just didn't think that it would be possible for a charter school or something like that to come in there, only because just with this wraparound program, it's not up to code, somebody would have to completely redo the church and I just don't see, I, I just don't see that happening. Again, there's just, like you said, what if? It may be fine, it may not be fine. And then I have to live with that because I live right there and I'm not too happy about that. So there, like I said, there were a lot of discrepancies between the first meeting and now, several things have been cleared up, but there's still a lot of what ifs. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have, any else, anybody else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Does anybody wish to speak? Neither for nor against or they're not sure? Step right up.
Hi, I'm Carrie Champion, 240 Chestnut Hill. Eric did a great job of clarifying everything, the letter. I didn't get to go to the meeting that they had, but I've heard a lot from the neighbors and I think everybody is kind of in agreeance that the program sounds wonderful. It's just, it affects us so much and I think that I didn't want to oppose it because I do think it's a great program and there's been so many good points made about it, but the traffic is a big issue for us. I mean, we, like they said, in that little space between St. Paul and where St. Paul and Winona collide first, there's 13 kids and most of them are six years and younger, maybe, maybe a little bit less than that, a little bit less than that. But, I mean, there's a lot of kids and they are all the time on the front. I mean, they all play out front. Everybody, I mean, some of the neighbors have smaller backyards and really large backyards, so they are always out there playing, you know, sports or just chasing each other, riding their bikes, they do all this stuff and that amount of traffic, the buses, that's huge. Buses may not see, I mean, people rushing to drop their kids off or rushing to pick their kids up and they speed constantly. People, and they don't realize it because they're coming right off of St. Paul, so they just don't realize how fast they're going because it's a main street you're coming down. I mean, I think that if this was to go through, one of the things that I don't know if it would do anything would be for the town to maybe put up, you know, slow children, you know, slow down children playing or something to help us. Obviously, I think Eric has mentioned that he's going to talk to people if this does go through. You know, that is a lot of kids. I will say, we have one of the quietest neighborhoods for having that many kids. You wouldn't know that we had that many kids because it's such a beautiful, quiet neighborhood, which is why my husband and I chose to live there, how quiet it was. And we didn't have kids, we didn't even know we wanted kids and now we have one and it's fabulous. And I love that with that amount of kids, you still have that quiet. I am a little concerned because I am, my backyard, I can see the church, I can hear the church and it's beautiful and wonderful now. I am concerned if there's 40 kids there after school, it's just going to be loud and I know that that may not be a found argument right now, but it may be. And that is a little bit of a concern, you know, having 40 kids, you know, outside during the summer months when people are barbecuing or we're all out back and, so that's a concern. And I will say, same thing that Alvy had mentioned, was that there have been a couple people that said if it doesn't work well, they may move. I mean, we have a very tight-knit community. Everybody goes to each other's parties, they all play together and I would hate to see the character of our neighborhood changed because of this. And so, I, again, I'm not opposed to it, I, I understand where they're coming from, I love the church, it's beautiful. We probably go sledding illegally back there when it's winter, so we really like, it's just all kept up nice and everything, but, yeah.
Keep sledding.
Keep sledding. But it's, it's, it's a beautiful church, you know, the songs and Sundays and everything. But on the flip side, I have to look out for my neighbors and my neighborhood and my kids and, you know, that sort of thing. So hopefully that gives a little bit more light on everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Could I maybe just respond to a couple of her concerns?
That's, that's the next part of the, of the hearing, is you, now that the public input has, did you want to? Of the hearing is you, now that the public input has, did you want to speak? All right, would you step up here then, please?
I am Jeff Drew, 227 Chestnut Hill Drive. My wife, Kim. We're by no means really opposed to the, the business aspect of it. We are concerned about the traffic, um, and the variance. If the variance is approved, um, that does carry forth to any future businesses, correct? Future tenants of that building?
Future commercial daycare operations.
Okay.
Not convenience store or retail outlet.
Just a sad truth that it is very possible that the church will fail. The churches before it have failed and new people have moved in. He's doing a fantastic job over there, I hope it grows. Um, but if it should fail, what opportunities does that leave open for future purchasers of that property?
Well, in the years that I've been on the board, we had an application with a church that had listed the property for sale without any offers on the property for more than a year. So what that would translate into for your neighborhood would be a vacant church building potentially for a year or longer. And then there was an offer to purchase the property. In this case, it was made by a dentist who wished to convert the church to a dental office. And he submitted the proof of the numbers and the church submitted the church showing that it had been listed for sale, it hadn't sold. He was the only person that was offering to do it and there's now a dentist where the church was. Now, does that mean?
Is that our one?
That would happen in that kind of a building? It was entirely a different building, it was on Culver Road as opposed to being a block off of St. Paul. But we can't predict what that would be. It would depend on who put in an offer, what the numbers were and what the evidence was that was presented to us if we were asked to grant the use variance in order for the sale to go through. But the longer the property stays on the market unsold, the easier it becomes for an applicant to establish that they can't realize a reasonable rate of return.
Agreed.
When we, um, came to the last meeting, we were very opposed. We have talked to Father Eric or Pastor Eric since then.
Oh, neither.
And, um, we feel a lot better about it now. I totally understand our neighbors' concerns and maybe some kind of street sign or something, um, would be good. The bus issue, I don't think there's going to be a lot of different buses coming through. It'd be the same schedule as the buses that already comes through. It would just be stopping instead of on the corner in front of the church, right?
I can't, I can't speak to what the buses are going to do. I, I would hope that they would, and bus transportation, come from a school district.
Pastor, could you come up to the microphone?
Coming from a school district, I understand that transportation departments are struggling as much as anybody else in, in the economy. And so they're looking for ways to maximize efficiency. Sense is whatever they try to do, it's going to be with the fewest number of buses and the fewest numbers of routes and drop-offs because money's tight everywhere. Um, and we saw reduction in busing services in Spencerport over the years and, um, I just, I can't imagine they're going to just add a whole bunch more runs. I think they're going to try to figure out a way to minimize, as, as you said, the number of buses. I just can't, I just don't know what it would look like. I think we're, we're, we're dealing with a lot of, you know, human nature of concern and fear about what could and impossibility and I, I understand that, you know, we all understand that. Um, but there's some things that we don't know and I, I just would hope that, that the zoning board would, would make a consideration based upon, you know, what we do know, um, not on what ifs and fears about those kind of things. But I, I understand those fears, I'm sensitive to those, those fears as a human being.
So another thing that we were worried about was, um, people from different communities, strangers basically, being in and out of our neighborhood. And it doesn't sound like that's, it's going to be people who are already in our neighborhood.
It's for.
As well as the teachers that, we have wonderful teachers in West Rondequoy, so I'd like to provide them a place for their kids while they're with our kids. Um, but I do understand the issues that the neighborhood has. Our, our biggest concern now is just if unfortunately something happened with the church, what that would leave open? And you answered that question, so.
We can't predict that.
Yeah. So we're not as opposed, I guess, as we were originally, but there's still just a few concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in relation to this application? Didn't you already speak to this?
I did, yes, I just.
All right, you get one shot.
So can, can I just ask about the, um, putting up speech signs? Because nobody seems to even know what speech is.
Otherwise, we would be here all night as people thought of different things. So we limited to one shot at the podium. Did you want to, uh, I saw somebody standing up back there, did you wish to speak? Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? And Pastor, you may, uh, address the concerns that were raised during the public portion of the hearing.
Yeah, I think, um, I don't remember who presented it, but a few of the things that I just want to respond to was the, um, the maximum possibility of forty children and the, the notion that forty kids would somehow be running around chaotically outside. Um, you know, as a, as an ed, former educator, as of June this year, and, and working, hopefully establishing a partnership with, with these educators, there is a growing trend in education to establish centers, to break kids up into manageable size groups and to enrich maximally, you know, as best they can. So what was proposed by Kristen, um, in response to that same concern, because it, it was a concern, was that forty kids outside all at once is going to be loud. Forty kids outside all at once is loud. And she said it would be more like ten children out with an adult supervised under some type of outdoor, uh, structured activity, uh, team building, beautification of the property, while other kids are in some of the other proposed areas doing such things as art enrichment. Because currently, the West Rondequoy curriculum doesn't allow art, um, for their kindergarten age students. She's an artist, he's a musician, so they want to offer enrichment opportunities. This isn't your, you know, quick, uh, get rich quick type, type of a scheme. These are, these are educators. These are people who recognize that forty children, trying to manage them outside all at the same time, is a challenging task for the best of us, you know, in terms of classroom management, children management skills. So the second thing, you know, related to that as well is a comment made about, um, summer hours and barbecues and things like that. This program will run at the same time as the public school year. When there's a day off for the West Rondequoy School District for children, there will be no program occurring. So when the, the families in the community have a vacation day, they want to be home with their kids on whatever it may be, Christmas break or winter break, February break, uh, from the end of school in June until the beginning of school in September, there will be no program. There'll be no disruption to those family times, vacation times that are very often commensurate, consistent with the school vacation calendars. Somebody who has four kids, that's when we take vacation, that's when we're off. Um, you know, with respect to the, the traffic, um, I think that, you know, there, there will be more buses coming. The bus drivers are not the Yahoo drivers whipping off of, you know, St. Paul onto Chestnut Hill and getting as fast as they need to go, go as fast as they can to get there where they need to be. Bus drivers are incredibly conscientious, they have training, they have particular speeds and procedures that they follow. So those bus drivers, although increased traffic, my strong suspicion will be that it will be a snail's pace like most buses and will in fact slow down some of those other speedy drivers who want to get quicker. And they may try to reroute as a result of some of the buses that don't allow them to go so quickly. Um, so, you know, and as Kristen articulated also at the, the town hall style meeting, there are, um, you know, you, you imagine forty kids and, and you have to think, it's not forty individual families, it's not forty individual cars. Each, uh, the average, she articulated, the average sibling number for the, the students in her program are, I believe, two to three, is what she said. So if you do the math, you're talking, you know, ten to fifteen cars maybe, if they do decide to pick up, um, because they're going to have multiple children. It's not going to be forty cars, it'll be at most ten to fifteen, um, cars picking up those children. So I hope that clarified some. And then also just, you know, again, this whole use variance and the what ifs, you know, could we throw up, uh, you know, a used car sales lot or erect four, you know, cell towers and all those kind of things? My understanding, and please help me and help the community, is that it's very specific to the nature of what we're proposing. So would it indeed be, if anything, if somebody wanted to do something, wouldn't it have to be what, what is being proposed in terms of a kindergarten school age program? So let's say in five years, if New York State Department of Education mandates that there is universal kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, regardless of whether or not West Rondequoy can, can afford it or convert all of its buildings, it goes away because the use variance was specific to a kindergarten school age program. Just help me understand that because that would.
That's the variance you're requesting? If it were granted, that's what it would be?
Yeah.
Like I said, it would not.
There's no, there's no spectrum of it could become all of this or it could become all of this.
Wouldn't become a mini mart.
Right. So I just, I hope that's somewhat clarifying for folks and some of those concerns and, um, and dialogue like this is crucial. You know, I, I feel like I have a relatively good, you know, relationship with even those folks who are in, uh, you know, opposition to this and I understand their position. We will continue to, to work with you and, and, and talk with you and if something is not developing as, as, as hoped, um, we'll find a solution, you know, we'll work for a solution together. I assure you, you know, so I'm publicly recorded now, we'll, we'll do that, you know, we'll do that. And I said, so help me God, so, you know, we'll, my word is as good as it can be. Hopefully that's helpful.
All right, thank you. And we will, uh, close the hearing with respect to that case and we will be in recess until, um, five of ten. 876 East Ridge Road and 759 Winona Boulevard. So those are the three cases that we will consider first in that order. And then we have, we'll go back and do 109 Shimeo, 33 Angeles and 102 Sea Cliff Road, which are the cases that are where the applicants have left. And we have two that we'll take up at the end that the applicants have agreed to defer and we just need to have a motion to table those. So we will start with the application pertaining to 15 Kinnery Drive. Think this is... The sheets that I have all say PB. So I'll change those to Z's. And the application pertaining to 15 Kinnery Drive is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve this request for the variance with the following findings. First of all, the variance is insubstantial enough so that it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's just part of that fence in the back she wants to be raised up to six feet. Are there alternatives that could be considered possibly, but this will be, this will make that whole area look correct because it'll all be six feet, as I said before, it's way in the back. So it's not a substantial request, should have no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the area and it may be considered self-created, however, it's pretty minor self-creation. I think it's a reasonable request and move that we approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. LaPerry.
Yeah, LaPerry.
I heard him first.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent tonight. Next application relates to 876 898 East Ridge Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes and this is for the board's consent as opposed to a variance. Is there anyone that wishes to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Because this is a consent to the criteria on the variance, I don't have to go down that, I'm just...
No, I don't think so, right?
All right, I'm gonna make it very simple. I would think that we would approve this application for consent for the fence because I just believe it'll help the gentleman's business. I want to promote business in Aranacoye and I think based on all of his people that stood up for him, he's gonna do the right thing and make us all proud.
May I make a suggestion? In moving forward with your consent on this project, you do consent and subject to applicant complying with all applicable town and county regulations.
Just what he says.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposition, no abstentions, and one member of the board remains absent. Next item pertains to 759 Winona Boulevard. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yeah, I'll move on this one that, and this being for a use variance for the establishment of a daycare in the church property. I'll move that we approve the request for variance as requested. We do with some concern over traffic and I'm not sure how we can influence this, but I do think that we should ask the town perhaps to look at a signage, something about slow down, you know, there's kids playing. Perhaps there'd be a street berm, that type of thing to slow cars down so we don't have to worry about them speeding down through that area. I think as we look at this, the church has shown that there is difficult to have a reasonable rate of return on church property as a church itself, as most churches today are seeing a downturn in revenues as their attendance falls off. It is a hardship, it's unique, does not, I don't believe that this will alter the character of the neighborhood whatsoever, although there can be some additional traffic. And alleged hardship has not been self-created, as the pastor pointed out, the attendance and the need for additional revenue is not unique to his church, but is a nationwide situation. So with that, I move that we vote to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And I believe that our council wishes to address this or point some things out to us.
I'm sorry that I didn't do it before the motion, but it's probably just as appropriate before you consider the final vote. And again, let me just qualify my comments by saying that I don't take a position with regard to whether you approve it or not, these are some considerations. Now, first of all, you know, section 267B of the town code suggests that when you grant a use variance, that you only grant the minimum variance that is necessary to resolve the unnecessary hardship. So perhaps in the course of your conversation before you vote, I think you might consider that as one context. And additionally, you can certainly grant, or you can pass the matter subject to any conditions or restrictions that are reasonable. Now, I've, you know, I've reviewed, and again, I'm not taking a position regarding what you do or not, but I've reviewed the submission that had been made and I think some of the components of the submission are things that had been discussed by some of the speakers and by the applicant, concepts such as no signage being made part of this project, that a fence wouldn't be installed. So even though the use variance moves with the land, only the use variance for a commercial daycare kindergarten program, if you say no fence, then no matter whomever runs it, it would be no fence unless the applicant came back to the board. The third part though, that I don't have resolved legally, and I'm not sure, and it's a major component of the application, is that all of the students are West Aranacoye students. I don't know in my expertise with regard to education law, if that can be made as a qualifier with regard to the student population. And then the last matter is that, and this may be relevant to the people who remain concerned about the program, I don't know the answer, and I've spoken with pastor about it, the answer of whether or not the West Aranacoye School District or any school district is obligated to provide bus transportation to a for-profit daycare. If it were, for example, a charter school, and I do have, I want to make sure you understand, I'm not just talking off the tip of my tongue, in that area I do have a lot of expertise. Charter school's a public school, so the public schools are obliged to provide bus transportation. So I know from talking to pastor, and he was certainly gracious in sharing the information, that Kristin Alkufine couldn't be here tonight, she would have the answers regarding, I believe, the bus transportation, the obligation of transportation and I just, it seems, now remember, I don't know if this has been, and I didn't realize it until I spoke to pastor, you're talking about opening this operation in September 2014. So if the board were of the mind, and I'm not trying to in any way, you know, postpone your decision-making or whatever, but if you were of the mind to get some of those answers, I think you'd have, I mean, you're talking about, you know, the town being aware of signage and all that, and it's certainly a referral we could make to staff, but the bus issues may be better answered if we have the person who would be responsible for that and is providing this program to answer some of those questions for the board.
Well, the bus though would not be really part of this application, would it? I mean, that's up to the schools to work out with the church and it's really not part of us to consider that in with this application.
Well, I think both of those components of 267B are in play, even with regard to the bus though. I mean, you're granting of this use variance, you could grant this use variance and say that bus transportation is prohibited. I mean, I'm not suggesting you do that, but that could be something, or you could grant this with an imposition of some condition or restriction regarding the bus transportation. You don't know what the bus transportation is gonna be and that's obviously the major component and concern of the neighborhood.
I think if I can make a comment, I think I agree with Bob, that this should be something for the Highway Department or Aranacoye DBW Department to figure out if and when something happens as far as too much traffic, what are these speed bumps, more signs, you know, I think right now we're worried about actually, what are you passing this or not, as much as what the traffic is gonna be, there's a million different things that could happen. And I think we gotta look at, what we're looking at right now is to vote on what's before us and let somebody else worry about the traffic study if and when it's needed. I mean, you don't know whether the buses are gonna affect it or not, just like we were just talking about.
Other than some of the things that our attorney just brought up, the application, the applicant, the father stood up in front, or pastor stood up in front of us and mentioned that it was a kindergarten group, it was gonna be morning kindergarten, this daycare was specific for kindergarten children and their siblings. It doesn't say that in our application. It says a daycare for children.
Well, it does say kindergarten children.
Well, in this one, it says school age children.
Okay. Here it says kindergarten.
All right, well...
I mean, we can make that a stipulation.
I think that we need to, if we are gonna go through with any type of approval, we need to make stipulations in, you know, again, I want to see it work, I want to see it go, I want to see it promote, but I also very conscious of the neighbors and if we leave it open-ended and we don't put the stipulations on it, before you know it, there's gonna be a fence, before you know it, there's gonna be a sign.
Oh, I agree with that.
And so on and so forth. So I think we limit it to the 14 morning children, the 14 evening afternoon children and a maximum of, if it's, if the number is 40 of their siblings to be allowed to come, we stipulate that it's 40, or if we think 40's too much and we want to back it down, we back it down to, you know, 25 or 30, whatever the case. We need to spell it out or we just give it open-ended and then the neighbors are gonna be, they won't have any recourse that way. They'll, if it starts to get too out of hand, there's nothing to come back. What stops them from going from kindergarten to first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, which, you know, would be the likely scenario, or could be a likely scenario.
What if we just put some stipulations on this motion and going back to what our attorney said, that there's no large signs, it can be included on the property. There is a small sign that they're gonna put near the door so that people know where to go in and out. There will not be any fencing allowed on the property.
Hold on, because I gotta write this down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There'd be no signs, and we're talking freestanding signs as opposed to a sign on the door.
Correct, correct.
So no freestanding signs on the property.
Yep.
And no fences to be... And no fences to be erected.
Correct.
And that the children all be part of a kindergarten program, limited to 14 morning, 14 afternoon, plus any siblings.
At a maximum of?
Maximum of 40.
And do we want to mention the, all right, so, and that includes the wraparound aspect that he was talking about?
Exactly right.
Anything else?
We want to put in there the months of operation and the time of day, because like the pastor said, there's nothing in, I would think, June, July and August.
Right, the application actually has an error, it says it's open till 7:00 at night.
So operation hours?
He said till 5:30.
5:30. To be, what was the starting time?
They got 6:00 AM.
6:00 AM to 5:30 P.M.
5:30, yes. And it actually ties to the West Arundacote School.
On the West Arundacote School calendar.
Correct.
Maybe 6:00 might not be the time.
Kristin had an open house curriculum night for her own children tonight, so she could be here. But I believe she clarified that, and that might have been later. I don't, I don't know if that matters to the decision you make if we say, she said it would stop at 5:30, that I recall. Whether it starts at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, I don't know. I think I'd rather hear on the side of caution.
Just because we say 6:00 doesn't mean she has to be there at 6:00.
It's fine to say if we suggest 6:00 to 5:30, I know she said 5:30.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Any other conditions that we'd want to put on the variance?
The school calendar.
Put that down on the West Arundacote School calendar.
Yes.
Anything else? Mr. Santoro, you seconded, do you agree with those conditions?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any, did you want to make the specific findings for the use variance?
Well, I thought I went through them, but, you know, as I mentioned, for a use variance, we believe the church can't show a reasonable rate of return as it is at the moment, so to be financially enabled, they really need to bring this additional income of the daycare. Hardship is unique, and because it is a church, and as the pastor pointed out, that churches are seeing a decline in revenue as their attendance drops off across the country. It's nothing unique to this particular church. Will not alter, in my opinion, the character of the neighborhood, although we all agree that there is some additional traffic that will be involved that we'll try to handle. And the hardship has not been self-created. Again, as he mentioned before, attendance and revenues at churches across the country has dropped off, so this is nothing that they have done in particular.
And with respect to what our attorney mentioned also, in terms of limiting it, I would note that the testimony was that even with this variance, the shortfall is not going to be completely eliminated, it's going to take care of about 50% or so of it, so it is not a variance that exceeds the need. In fact, it does not meet, fully meet the need.
That's correct, that's absolutely correct.
The use variance stays with the building?
Property.
The property. So if this church sells out and another church takes over, the daycare can stay.
With the same conditions.
Same conditions.
Right.
Right. And if they decided to close up their daycare operation, another daycare operation could come in on the same, but on the same conditions.
Same conditions, that's correct. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and one member of the board continues to be absent. The next item for our consideration would be the application with respect to 109 Chameau Road. This is a type 2 action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application or a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion. This one is Chameau Road, 109 Chameau Road, the wraparound porch. I make a motion that we approve this on the following criteria. I don't believe it will change the character of the neighborhood, actually it'll enhance the character and the look of the home and the neighborhood. Alternative solutions is not to do it, but I think it's nice to have a nice porch around the house. The variance is not substantial, we're looking for six feet of a front setback difference. I don't believe that's substantial. It will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental of the neighborhood. It is a self-created problem, well, some of it's a self-created problem, but not really. She had a tree fall on her old porch, and she's replacing it with a nicer one, and a little more of a porch. So based on the criteria, I believe we should approve 109 Chameau as applied for.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board is absent. Next item on our agenda for consideration would be the application pertaining to 33 Angeles Drive. This is a type 2 action for seeker purposes, and I would make a motion that we grant the variance based on the following findings. The addition of six feet of fencing from the rear foundation line of the property to the front foundation line of the property, and connecting that with the front property line, or front foundation line of the property at the garage, will not create a substantial change to the character of the neighborhood, but will allow the homeowner to have the privacy that the homeowner desires. The alternative that would not require a variance would require, the only alternative that would not require a variance would be a plantings or some other kind of visual obstruction that would provide for the privacy that the homeowner is seeking, which is not, is not a feasible alternative, given the time that it would take for plants to grow. It's not a substantial request because a four-foot fence would be permitted, but a four-foot fence would not require, or would not provide the privacy that the homeowner is seeking, so the variance is for a height of two feet. It's not going to have any adverse physical or environmental effect on the conditions. It is a self-created hardship in the sense that the applicant is seeking privacy regardless, and we make, I make no findings with respect to whether or not there is any harassment or any reason for the homeowner to be concerned in relation to her neighbor who indicated that there isn't that kind of a problem. That's not any basis for the decision. The decision is based on the fact that the homeowner is seeking to have that privacy, and it's not otherwise available, and it is not a substantial variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lepary second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I disagree on a couple of points. First of all, I think it is a fairly substantial request to have that six-foot fence come right up alongside that side of the house. She's got quite a bit of six-foot fence around there to begin with, this will just add more to it, and I think it would kind of look pretty ugly. I think, I think I have to agree when somebody said it'd be like putting up a wall. I do agree with the suggestion that plantings would be the way to go, because you can get, you can buy six-foot arborite that are right there and put them in, and gain maybe the same type of result. I think this is almost like a knee-jerk reaction, and I just hate to see us just all quickly turn around, let's throw a fence up, that'll solve the problem. I don't know if I'm sure the fence would solve the problem anyway. I think the problem would be solved with a meeting of the minds of the two neighbors who may be in opposition. I always think that's the best solution, but after hearing both sides of the story tonight, it seems to me that's a reasonable expectation. So I, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion mainly for those reasons. I think there's a better way to go about it.
I would agree with Mr. Thomas. Putting the fence up just strikes me as needless, and I agree, it's a knee-jerk reaction, I think that's a good term for it. I do agree that the two neighbors could probably get together and figure this one out themselves. There's obviously been some issues there between the two of them, and maybe it's time to have a beer in the backyard, but I can't support the fence. I don't think there's a need for it. I suspect the problem could be solved, privacy with putting curtains up in her garden room, whatever she called it, the back room there she's got, where she doesn't sit in there because she's afraid the neighbor might be looking at her. Or plantings, I think there's something we could do besides a six-foot fence. So I'm not going to vote in favor of it.
Any other comments?
I got one, just one comment. It seems like we're getting more and more into the spite fence situation that I've seen since I've been on the board for six years, but I go along with my two colleagues as far as not supporting it.
We have approved very similar style fences coming down the side of the garages like this before. We just approved one on Winona Boulevard in a very similar situation last month or the month before. This is not the first one like this, and also, the one on Winona had a tighter driveway issue, so.
We also just approved the one on 15 Kenery Drive, which is.
Right, so again, I don't know, you know, obviously each criteria is a little different, but in reference to the individual wanting privacy, you know, again, I don't think it's a deterrent, and I don't think it changes the character of the neighborhood, which is the biggest offense in my opinion. It's not a substantial variance. I understand that the two aren't getting along, and I hate that, and I, you know, I feel bad about it, but if there's, you know, if there's the alternative with the bushes, you can still walk by bushes, okay? You know, not that that's going to happen, but that's why she wants a fence. And I, you know, I understand that part of it, and not to, you know, pick on the neighbor because that's what I want to do.
Well, I think the neighbor would disagree that the character of the neighborhood hasn't changed with that fence.
Well, it will change for him, I understand that.
It's changed a lot.
Obviously, I think everything we grant changes something for someone.
Right. Unfortunately, we try to make them all happy, but you, you, you know, it's tough to make everybody happy.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nay. Well, there's three, right? Mr. Hammond, Mr. Santora, and Mr. Thomas are opposed. Myself, Mr. Antini, and Mr. Lepary are in favor, so we have three in favor, three opposed, no abstentions, and one member absent, which means that the motion does not carry.
Correct. You're a board comprised of seven, regardless of the present, you have the one absent member, you still need the majority of the fully gathered board.
Now, can this be recalendered at another date when the fourth member would be, or the seventh member would be present?
Yes.
So I would move then that we recalendar this for our October meeting. Hopefully, Mr. Polino would be present then, and would that be read advertised for a hearing? Okay, all right. So all those in favor of recalendering this at the October meeting, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So the motion carries, five in favor, one opposed, any, oh, I forgot to ask any abstentions. No abstentions, and one member continues to be absent. Next item is with respect to 102 Sea Cliff Road. This is also a type 2 action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for the variance with regard to actually what amounts to a garage. That the, it certainly would not change, not change the character of the neighborhood. She doesn't have alternatives, since the old garage is basically falling apart. It's not a substantial request because she's not really adding much of anything except an area to turn around, and she'll be getting the kind of a garage that she can use with electricity and that type of thing. Certainly no effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the area, and this one really is not self-created in that the old garage is so bad that she can't insure it or anything, so she really needs this. That's why I move that we approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We have two applications left. The one is pertaining to 140 and 146 Mallard Drive. With respect to this application, this is a type 2 action for seeker purposes, I would move, and again, note this is with the applicant's consent, that we table this application, or that we adjourn this application to October.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board remains absent. Last application is 230 Avondale Road. Again, I would make a motion that this application be adjourned to the October 2013 meeting, and would note again that this is with the consent of the applicant. Is there a second for that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, one member of the board remains We have two other items of business before we adjourn. That would be the minutes that were distributed with the packet pertaining to the July 1st And there are four of us present tonight who were present in July. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes that were sent out with that, from that meeting? I would move that we approve the minutes for the July 1st meeting as prepared. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, four votes in favor. We have two abstentions, and we have one member who's absent. The, I moved it, and I think Mr. Lepary seconded it, and then myself, and Mr. Hammond, and Mr. Lepary, and Mr. Santora approved them, and there were two abstentions, and Mr. Polino is still absent. Then we also had, minutes from the August 5th meeting were sent out with the packet, and then tonight there were substitute minutes. The only change between the minutes that were sent with the packet and the minutes that were distributed to us tonight is at the end of the August meeting, we that were distributed to us tonight is at the end of the August meeting, we had a discussion, and there was a motion made and carried that any applicant who failed to comply with the requirements concerning displaying the public hearing sign in accordance with the instructions would be deemed to have consented to have the application adjourned for one month in order for the signs to be properly displayed. Other than that, the minutes, I believe, are the same as what was distributed. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2013 meeting as they were revised to include that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and one member of the board continues to be absent. I believe that concludes the business that we have for the evening, so we are adjourned.